So, uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, we are happy to get started on our October 21st meeting of the Planning Commission. Laura, do you wanna, uh, do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden? Indicated he's, he's present.
Sorry, I don't know.
Commissioner Koff still?
Hello.
Commissioner Taylor will be absent this evening. Commissioner Targ is expected, and Chair Haskell.
Here, thank you. Okay, so, uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, we have an agenda this evening that's set out in the, uh, materials on, on the Planning Commission website of, or the component that's dedicated to the Planning Commission on the town website. Uh, so the first issue, uh, that we handle is oral communications. These are communications in which the public is welcome to, uh, make, uh, comments to the commission, not with respect to any items on the agenda. And while we can hear the comments, we're not able to comment on them substantively. Are there any, um, I, I think there are three, if I see this correctly, Laura, uh, people in the, uh, it, the attendees who have an oral communication. So if that's correct, um, I'll invite Ms. Morgan Taylor to, uh, provide an oral communication.
I've unmuted her microphone.
Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you, Chair Haskell. I am commenting tonight on two things. One is, not on the agenda, and that is the, um, preference that we list, the number of participants, and I caught, you kindly, told us last week, or two weeks ago, how many were in attendance, but since then, the town council's figured out how to release that information to us that would unburden you from that. Um, so some hosts in this, amongst the staff, do know how to do it. Is there, um, I would just ask, my request is that, that we receive this information. It's, it's just a check of a box, uh, um, on the host preferences side. And then I would like to make a second comment, which does pertain to the minutes, but because the minutes in, um, of late are being, um, taken to the back end, depending upon how long this meeting goes, and with four hundred and, you know, fifty pages or so, it could go aways. Um, I may not be able to stay the whole while, and my comment about the minutes, is really about, um, the number of minutes that are being approved, particularly when they have previously been, approved five oh, and yet they're still named as a draft, and so I wanted to understand if, we were bringing back minutes that have been previously approved, which is what it appeared to me, to be true, and at least, um, one or two cases. I would like to know if the custom is to redline, um, those changes that are being put forward these many months later.
So, we're not really able to discuss substantively it, however, given the interest in, in letting people not wait till the end, Laura, do you have a short response? I, I think if it's short, we could, have that, uh, conveyed, but otherwise, I think we should, if it's more complicated, we should, we're gonna have to leave it till the end.
Um, through the chair, um, these minutes have not been previously approved. Um, we received a public, um, inquiry about the past minutes, and we realized that we had made a mistake. The planning commission had declined to approve some minutes because we didn't have the right people in attendance, to approve the previous minutes, then we got out of order, and then with the pandemic, we had to go back and re-crec them. So we've double-checked, and we believe that we have these outstanding minutes to approve tonight.
Okay.
May I, may I say something?
You can say it. We're not gonna continue a conversation, but feel free to make a comment.
Well, never mind. I, I will see if I can wait till the end.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, we have Rita Combs as well, oral communication.
Hi, thank you for your time. Uh, yesterday, I picked up over thirty cigarette butts and other garbage alongside my property on West Ridge, and down the block from me, there were over fourteen vehicles, um, construction vehicles and cars related to construction, happening within one block of my home. Are there any restrictions on how many active projects can simultaneously happen on one block in town? And if there are any plans, um, in the immediate future to have a portal, so we can see what projects are going on, um, this many projects, you know, perhaps because of the virus or, or something, but there are just so many projects, and we are not having the street cleaners come through. I haven't seen street cleaners come through in, for over a year, or however long. Uh, how are these things being handled if there are so many projects happening in town? I don't know if your office is the one that takes care of this, but, um, how do, how can this get a little better?
Mm-hmm. Um, Laura, I'm gonna ask you if it's okay to follow up with, uh, Ms. Combs after this, to get, her information on those topics. Would that work for you?
Yes, um, we've received an email from Ms. Combs, um, Howard Young and I have, and so that's in our email. Um, and to briefly answer one of the questions, no, we do not have a restriction on the number of projects that are in construction at once, and I don't think we would be able to legally do that. But we'll be in touch with the other items.
Okay.
As far as, um, fire safety, I'm quite concerned with a couple of areas in town, but I was sickened by picking up thirty cigarette butts, outside my property, and that's a real worry for, um, fire safety for all of us in this town.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, we'll also ask, uh, uh, um, Ms. Russell to go ahead and, um, take that under consideration. Um, obviously, fire safety is important, and we should follow up on that.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Shostak, uh, you're next. You're on mute, okay.
Okay, I'm muted now. Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Okay, I have a question on mainly timing and process, and the question is, has to do with the Stanford Wedge, which is a project that's going to be considered, you know, in the next few months at least. Um, the question is, what is the anticipated schedule going forward? Can you tell me? Can Laura Russell, suggest, um, a likely, uh, the likely timing to have the project appear before the commissions?
Laura, I'm gonna ask you to see if there's a resource that you could point to where that will be either laid out, or if you, have some information, feel free to convey it.
We don't have a timeline yet, for when the project would be, um, in front of ASCC and Planning Commission. Um, we're working on some of that timeline information, and we'll be updating the website when we have it. So I encourage you to look there. As soon as we have a timeline, we'll be putting, we'll be posting that on the town's website, on the Stanford page in particular, and you can contact me directly if you have further questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, um, following up on that, for the draft DIR, uh, will the ASCC be, um, reviewing that first, or will the Planning Commission? Do you know who's going first?
Um, the ASCC will conduct a preliminary review, followed by a Planning Commission preliminary review. Um, we don't anticipate, uh, a detailed analysis, or sort of, uh, um, presentation to the ASCC on the draft DIR. That falls more within the Planning Commission's purview, but we're still developing the exact steps that we're gonna go through.
Okay, and you, you anticipate having the, um, I guess the steps for the process outlined, in detail on the, uh, the Stanford site? Um, it's not the Stanford site, the, the wedge, um, section of the, uh, Portola Valley dot net?
Correct.
Okay, and yeah, I'd like to be in touch with you.
Please do, yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, unless there are other, uh, oral communications, um, we have Nan Shostak's, uh, hand is still up, and Betsy Morgan Thaler, so Ms. Morgan Thaler, do you have another oral communication?
Yes, 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 yes.
I'm afraid you're echoing, sorry. Okay, unless we can fix that, I think we need to.
I hope.
Betsy, if you have two devices going, mute one of them and use the other one.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Okay, we can't hear you. I think you might have muted the wrong one. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize for having two devices open at once. It was, I was trying to troubleshoot. Um, is it possible that you can allow us to have, the, um, the, I'm on the speaker view, and I would like to toggle to gallery view. Is it possible that that would, that you can just check that box to allow us to toggle to gallery view?
Laura, I'll have to defer to you. Right now, I see thirteen attendees joining and fourteen panelists.
Yes, it's so nice to be able to see the panelists like I would if I were at the lovely little Red Schoolhouse, so just trying to replicate that experience as we did last time. We were together, and, um, it's become more restrictive this time, and I'm hoping we can liberate a little bit of familiarity in the process. Thank you for every effort you can make to do so.
Laura, I don't know if that's possible for this. Um, if it's easy, let's make it happen. If it's difficult, let's try for next time.
Okay, and if Carrie, you can do what you can on that, that would be great, to have the attendees see the speaker view, or the, um, gallery view. I'll work on that now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, not seeing any other oral communication, hands up. I'm gonna move on to the new business, which is an appeal of Architectural Site Control Commission decision to approve an architectural review and development permit, uh, to construct a new residence with basement and pool at one thirty-eight Goya. Um, so Laura, is, is there a staff report, first of all?
There is. Um, Dylan will be giving the majority of the staff report, so we'll go ahead and let him, um, share his screen to get started.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and begin with the staff report. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Uh, the item before you this evening is an appeal, to an ASCC decision on August the twenty-fourth, to approve a site development and an architectural review permit for a new residence, located at one thirty-eight Goya Road. Uh, staff, like, I would like to begin this presentation, with a brief overview of how tonight's, um, meeting will proceed, and with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Laura Russell to describe that.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. I know most of you, but just in case, I'm Laura Russell. I'm the Planning and Building Director. Um, the project planner is Dylan Parker. He'll be giving the majority of the presentation, and we also have our town attorney, Kara Silver, um, with us this evening. Um, it's important to note also that earlier this afternoon, the planning commissioners had the opportunity to visit, both sites, one thirty-eight Goya, the project site, and one forty-eight Goya, which is the adjacent neighbor, to view the sites and to view the story polls. So we haven't had an appeal, and quite sometimes, we wanted to go over the meeting structures, that everyone can follow how this is gonna go tonight. First, we'll have staff's presentation, followed by any planning commission questions that they may have for staff. Then we'll have the appellant's presentation. So these are the folks that filed the appeal, um, and they have a presentation, and then there could be commission questions for them. Then the original applicant for one thirty-eight Goya will give a presentation, followed by any planning commission questions there. Then we'll turn over to the public hearing section of, of the meeting, where all members of the public are free to give comments on the application, and that will be managed similarly to how we just did the oral communications, with the chair calling on people and staff, allowing, um, the unmuting of the microphones and letting people talk. We're still getting the hang of this, so thank you, everyone, for your patience. Council's been doing it for a while, but we're still pretty new at it here at Planning Commission. And then we recognize that through the course of this thing, conversation, there could be, um, new issues that have been brought up, or new questions. So then we have an opportunity for the appellant to have some closing remarks, as well as closing remarks from the original applicant. And then we'll turn it back over to the Planning Commission for their discussion and potential decision this evening. So now we'll have Dylan, um, give the presentation and introduce the project, and it, all the things that have happened so far.
All right, thank you, Laura. All right, so I'm gonna start the presentation with a brief overview of the site and the proposed project. So the subject property is a three-point-one acre, uh, site, in the town's RE zone, with an average slope of thirty-five percent. There is an existing four thousand eighty-seven square foot, two-story residence with a tor- attached garage, uh, built in nineteen sixty-six. So these pictures on the slide indicate the proximity between one thirty-eight and the neighbors at one forty-eight Goya and their residence. So the proposal is to demolish the existing two-story residence and construct a new two-story residence with basement, pool, and associated hardscape and landscape improvements. The new residence's main level is pivoted approximately forty-five degrees, to the south from the existing footprint, but still within the overall building pad area of the site. The second story is set at an angle that roughly follows the footprint of the existing residence's single-story. A three-car garage with a guest suite attaches to the main living quarters of the residence through a fully enclosed hallway, which additionally serves to frame the westernly edge of the new pool and integrated spa of the residence. This table to the left indicates the project's conformance with the applicable town development standards, such as height setbacks and maximum floor areas. The proposed exterior materials include wood and concrete, which are commonly used in town. The exterior material's, uh, color palette reflects the natural tones of the selected materials, or when man-made materials are selected, such as the window trim or roofing, it is a natural tone that allows the proposed structure to blend within the surrounding natural context. So now with the project briefly overview, staff would like to turn to the project timeline. So on July the thirteenth, ASCC conducted a preliminary review of the project, at which the view corridor issue was discussed by representatives from both one thirty-eight and one forty-eight Goya Road. In consideration of staff's report, public comments, and discussion amongst themselves, ASCC suggested the following project changes to alleviate the view corridor issue. Reduce the overall height of the structure by one foot. Reduce the interior plate heights by one foot. Relocate the proposed residence southerly by five feet. Modify the proposed roof line, and rotate the second-story massing. On July the twenty-first, staff received revisions, plant, revised plans based on ASCC's suggested changes, and continued conversations with one forty-eight Goya Road neighbors regarding view corridor concerns. These project revisions included a one-foot reduction of vertical height, a one-foot reduction of the maximum height, and roughly one-foot reduction in the first floor plate height. And so, this slide just further details the reduced vertical and maximum heights, of one foot each. And then this slide, uh, details the reduced first-floor plate height, of roughly over one foot. So turning to the, the final, or the second ASCC meeting, on August the twenty-fourth, ASCC conducted their final review of the project. In consideration of staff's report, public comments, and discussion amongst themselves once again, ASCC voted four to one to approve the project, with Chair Breen voting against. During the meeting, ASC noted, ASCC noted the following, that there was some reasonable obstruction of views from one forty-eight that occurred with the project, that the project was similar in design to the current design, and that there were many opportunities for expansive views from one forty-eight Goya Road, and that there was a minimal loss of views, that the greatest view impact from one forty-eight Goya was from the pool deck. The house does not have the same degree of impact due to its higher altitude on the site, and lastly, that the town was mostly concerned with public view corridors along Portola and Alpine Road. So subsequent to this meeting on September the second, neighbors at one forty-eight Goya Road submitted an appeal of this August the twenty-fourth decision, approval, which contends the approved plans, one, failed to comply with the Town and Portola Valley zoning code, two, failed to follow the Town and Portola Valley's design guidelines, and three, is not an exempt project as defined by CECL. So the next section of staff's report or presentation will, I, I address these items that were contended. So staff would like to start with conformance to the general plan. Uh, the general plan's land use element describes development principles and objectives to achieve in residential areas, which are listed on this slide. Staff finds that the project meets both the principles and objectives, as it integrates the building into its surroundings and maintains a similar massing pattern to the existing house, minimizes grading and site disturbance, preserves natural terrain and landscaping, groups the house and associated improvements into the existing built area, maintains the natural beauty, habitat, and open space of the majority of the site, and maintains the character of the residential area by bui- by building below the maximum development standards, and reusing the existing built area. So now turning to conformance with the zoning code. So sections eighteen point six four point zero six zero, and eighteen point four eight point zero one zero of the Portola Valley Municipal Code outline criteria, and findings for approval of the architectural and site plan review applications. As further detailed in the complete analysis included in staff's report to the commission, staff finds that the project is in conformance to both objective development standards, such as height, setback, maximum floor area, and impervious surfaces, in addition to subjective standards of the code, particularly with the, it's pro- proposed reuse of the existing building pad to minimize natural terrain disturbance, um, provide adequate light and air for itself and neighbors, and to mitigate adverse effects and preservation of privacy on neighboring properties. And so now turning to the town's design guidelines. These guidelines include review criteria for three main aspects of the project, site design, architectural design, and landscape design. Under these main aspects, the guidelines provide additional principles for certain aspects of the project. These principles are discretionary and subject to interpretation by the reviewing body. Staff finds that the project is in conformance to the design guidelines, particularly with the view preservation principles, which staff will now discuss more in detail in the following slides. So to start, and to better understand view corridor preservations, I wanted to start with the definition of a view corridor. View corridors are simply lines of sight out of a window or patio door from a residence, as this left-hand illustration depicts. Now, I included this illustration because it is a uncanny representation of the actual two sites, with one forty-eight Goya being the higher residence on the ridge line, and one thirty-eight Goya being the lower residence on the ridge line. So when you look at the illustration, you notice that both houses have overlapping view corridors, which are depicted as the arrows jutting out at roughly forty-five degree angles from each residence. This indicates that the lower residence partially obstructs the upper residence's view if looking downward. So why is this germane? Well, the proposed residence, sorry. Sorry about that. Well, the proposed residence at one thirty-eight Goya is roughly sited in the same location as the existing residence, and it is massed, in similar fashion, with the second story smaller in comparison to the first floor. Also, there is a four-foot-eight-inch height increase from, uh, and a shift in the second-story massing, but all of this reconfiguration stays relatively in the same cubic footprint of the existing residence. Now, if we go back to my point of how the illustration shows the lower dr- the lower residence blocks the upper residence's view, looking downward, suppose the upper residence has a pool deck that sits lower on the ridge line, let's say somewhere near the property line. How does this now impact views from the upper residence? The impact increases because now the line of sight is lower down the ridge line, giving the effect of increasing the size of the lower residence in the line of sight. So it's a simple matter of perspective. The closer you are to an object, the larger it appears, if your line of sight, in your line of sight, and vice versa. So how does this relate to the appeal before us? Well, one forty-eight Goya asserts that the proposed residence has substantial view impacts to their property from their pool deck, which sits lower on the ridge line and closer to the shared property line with one thirty-eight Goya. However, this impact is to a lesser degree from the residence, since it's sited higher on the ridge line. In other words, there is a greater separation in distance between the two residences versus the pool deck, which acts to shrink the new massing. So to illustrate this better, here are two pictures that the one thirty-eight Goya team took early on in the design review process that show vantage points from one forty-eight Goya. So, this is a picture of one forty-eight Goya's pool deck view corridor. Note that the faint story poles in the center, and from this angle, you can see that the second story does significantly block views of the bay. However, this is a picture, which is taken from one forty-eight Goya's rear patio. The second story has minimal impact on view corridors. In fact, the telling component of this picture is that the significant tree canopy and vegetation exists to screen that new massing, which is located in this area over here. However, this tree canopy and vegetation appears to no longer exist on one forty-eight Goya's property. As recently as April of this year, removal has occurred in the area noted by this red hashed box. Therefore, staff concludes that the, that if this tree veget- if this tree and vegetation removal had not occurred on one forty-eight Goya, particularly in the area bounded by this yellow triangle, the proposed second-story massing of one thirty-eight Goya would be less visible from one forty-eight Goya. Although it's hard to view, this two, twenty-twenty photo shows the story poles as installed for one thirty-eight Goya's new residence. So this is this area that I'm circling with my cursor. So just walking through the pictures, twenty-eleven, twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty, indicates severe or significant, uh, canopy reduction within this triangle. So now with discussing view corridor and view corridor preservations, as it relates to the appeal, staff wanted to turn to the final component of the appeal, which relates to CECL compliance. So, the project is construction of a single-family residence within a residentially zoned district, which is defined as categorically exempt pursuant to section fifteen, three oh three, subsection A of CECL guidelines. Furthermore, the project is not an exception to a categorical exemption pursuant to section fifteen, three hundred point two, subsection A, since it does not meet any of the defined categories for an exception, such as located on a scenic highway, Or hazardous waste site. Therefore, staff finds that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And requires no additional environmental review such as an initial study or impact report. And so now turning to public comments. As required by town code, the notice for tonight's hearings were posted in the almanac. Posted at three bulletin boards in town. And mailed to properties within a three hundred foot radius of 138 Goya Road. Public comments received after publication of the staff's report to the commission have been forwarded as noted earlier. And they will be read into the public record for tonight's hearing. And so with that, staff would like to conclude with the following findings. The ASCC approved the project at its August the 24th public meeting. In consideration of staff's report. Public comments received at that hearing and at the previous meeting. And in their discussion of the project with a vote four to one. And so additionally, staff finds that the project continues to conform to the general plan. It conforms to the zoning code. It conforms to the town's design guidelines. And the project is exempt from cert from further CEQA review. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal. And uphold the ASCC decision as noted in the attached draft resolution. And with that, that concludes staff's report and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all. There's going to be several segments of our discussion tonight. So I'm going to ask the planning commission. Members what questions they have of staff is step number one. And I guess I will go in the order that I'm seeing them. So Anne, do you have questions of staff?
Yes, I have one question. I was unclear on these changes that got made after the preliminary ASCC. In terms of the height, how much has the house come down in height total? And do the story polls that we saw today, were they the original story polls or they match this modification? That you told us about?
So the the vertical height has been reduced by one foot.
Okay.
And the maximum height has also been reduced by one foot.
Remind me what those two are and the difference?
Sure. So vertical height is best way to describe it is at any point. So yeah, the maximum height would be the high low, taking into the topography or the slope.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Yes, and then tell me about what the story polls I saw today. Do they reflect the original height or this one foot down?
My understanding is that they do not. The story polls have been installed since February. And I do not believe that they have been reconfigured to drop one foot. So I believe they reflect the original massing. And I defer to the project team, Dan, to either confirm or deny that they've been installed and reconfigured.
Yeah, that's correct. They have not been reduced in height pursuant to the changes.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
John, how about you? What questions do you have for staff?
I have one question, and it's a procedural question. In the sense of in terms of our evaluations, like. Are we dealing just with the three points of the appeal? So if anything else were to come up. Do we include that or not? Or are we limited to what has been identified as the appeal items?
Great question. My understanding in consultation with town council is this is considered a de novo hearing. Which is Latin for new. I learned that. So I anticipate that the planning commission could take these following actions and I'm going to share my screen again. So that way there are some other items you can consider. Sorry. Can everyone see this slide?
Yes.
Okay, so these these are the three actions that the planning commission could take. And so one of the in answering your question. The project could be approved by planning commission. The project could. Approve the appeal and rescind the ASCC approval. Or the planning commission could rely on ASCC's decision and deny the appeal. Or we could continue the project to a future hearing if there is. Any discussions or feedback and suggestions at this hearing. That would warrant a continuation of the item.
So that actually isn't, that doesn't actually answer my question.
Okay.
I was trying to deal with. So there were three items associated with the appeal. You know, the CEQA, the guidelines and the code. In our consideration tonight in deciding what action to take. Do we limit it to those three items? In the event that some other consideration is brought up?
Can the town attorney comment on that? My understanding is that. We can decide what we're going to focus on. Certainly, the the view corridor is. The key item that that both parties have focused on. Both both parties have submitted additional context. And so if Kara could clarify for us what what topics we're entitled to. Focus on if we're constrained in any way, please comment.
Sure, thank you. Can you all hear me? Kara Silver, town attorney. So as Dylan mentioned, the the appeal that is before this particular. Body is considered a de novo appeal. So you need to look at all of the evidence that has been presented. And look at the findings yourself to assure yourself that these findings can all be met. And you can use your independent judgment on those findings and. You there may be additional evidence that submitted into the record tonight. That was not available at the ASCC hearing, which may cause you to change your mind. So that's that's really what a de novo hearing is about. So you however, of course, that the three issues that were raised by. The appellant were were issues that were also discussed in ASCC and those seem to be. The major issues that the parties are concerned about. So it's likely this hearing will focus on those issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, John?
Oh, that's it. That was just a single question.
No? Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right, Nicholas, do you have questions for staff?
You're muted.
How's that?
That works.
Can you hear me now? There you go. Hey, I want to start with a CEQA question if I might, no great surprise. And that is, Kara, my understanding is that categorical exemption isn't applicable if there's an unusual circumstance. Is that right? Would it be an unusual circumstance if a residence or a single residence view? Was obscured or they were affected by increased light? Or is that a finding a fact that we would need to make?
Right, so there are generally three exceptions to the categorical exemption and one of those. Is the unusual circumstance. And there the guidelines themselves do not. Fully define what an unusual circumstance is, so it is sort of a case by case basis. But there's a series of of case law that. That of course looks at unusual circumstances. So it's that's something within the purview of of this body to determine whether you think that. The particular. Project is is in an environment that would. Warrant the finding that there is an unusual circumstance.
So what does that case law say about impacts to an individual house by things like? View obstruction or light?
Right, so there is a. There are a couple of cases that actually deal with. View obstructions in connection with the CEQA analysis. And it doesn't, there's one particular case that. Looks at a view and doesn't analyze it as an unusual circumstance, but instead analyzes it. On whether it is, it qualifies under the location exception. And in in that case, it it determines that. View does not is really not one of those issues that the regulations. Intended to encompass a location exception. The location exception applies to things like if it's a hazardous waste dump or something like that, that would. Trigger that would then throw it out of the exception of the categorical exception. But just because the project blocks a view. Would not defeat the use of the categorical exemption.
So that's a location exemption, but with respect to which is different than the unusual circumstance, I believe. Berkeley Hillside case.
Right, right, exactly.
So how do we think about the issue of a categorical exemption? Under an unusual circumstance. With respect to light and view, not with respect to. The issue of location more generally. Or is that a fact specific determination? That's entrusted to this body or the ASC to determine?
Right, so it's it certainly is within your your discretion. I believe the case that that looked at views also analyzed the unusual circumstance and found that it. Clearly was not an unusual circumstance in that case. I'll try to look it up while you're deliberating. But you know that that particular case, obviously, if if it was. At at you know, a colorable argument, I think the court would have found that the views. Would could be analyzed under unusual circumstances.
Thank you. So I think that's probably entrusted. To us, we could, for example, determine. That it's not unusual for a house to be built in a. Rural suburban. Community that has an impact on on views.
Correct.
Or we could determine that this is unusual because we have a. Discretionary guideline that says that we should.
Right, or that it's the only property in town that that has these views or something like that. I think there is some discretion.
So the other question I have is our stand. There are two standards that I think with respect to view that we care about. One are. Views from public locations and one is a view from. A private residence and one I think is probably embodied in specific plan. Another also in the general plan and is probably restated. With respect to individual houses within the design guidelines. The finding that was made by the. ASC said that the impact was both minimal. And in staff report, it said that it had been minimized. Is that the standard that we should be thinking about in terms of compliance with the design guidelines? Or what is our standard that we should be evaluating impacts to views? On under the design guideline, or does it just say that? That it should be avoided or how do I how do I think about that? Because if it says that it should be minimal or that it should be minimized. Then I have to think about whether steps have been taken to. To do those, but whether in fact is minimal. Or whether steps have been taken to minimize it. And I don't know. I don't know how to think about that. I don't know what the standard of review is.
Kara? I don't know if you can comment on that?
Is identified as item six bullet four in the. Design guidelines and I did not have a chance to. Look that up and I don't know Laura or someone on staff. My might have that in a yeah, bullet four, page six of design guidelines. So I just I don't I don't know what my standard is.
I'll I'll take a stab at it and then Laura, you can Laura, Dylan, you can chime in. So the the actual language in the design guidelines is to. Prevent obstruction of views of adjacent property owners by structures or additions to existing structures. So we think that that is a fairly. Subjective standard. It doesn't say in it doesn't really define. The view corridor. And so and I think that that's what the ASCC spent some time on is. It does the view corridor include this the the whole view corridor? Does it include? Views from the main house as well as the pool deck and every corner of, you know, the the property. And so what staff has has, I think where staff has landed is the diagrams in the. In the in the design guidelines themselves that show not the full view corridor of the property, but. Rather a a sort of a reasonable view corridor. Is what the design with the design guideline. Is intended to 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 protect.
Kara, I'm sorry, again, I don't have the document here. Does it say to prevent? Obstruction of views or view corridors and they're different things. A view corridor is a general plan term that. Commissioner Stills educated me on earlier today. But I I'm unsure whether there's a difference that I should be thinking and I apologize for taking so much time. But I want I want to give this proper judgment. Do I care that whether it says views or view corridors?
So that's an interesting question. I think that it view corridor in the general plan has a more defined definition. And you're right that 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 a view corridor under the general plan and under the scenic corridor plan. Has a different meaning. But this particular guideline uses the word just views.
Right.
And so it's and the guideline is. Prevent the obstruction of views. And so I think there is a distinction there. It doesn't contain it. The design guidelines do not contain a definition of what views are, but again. The way staff has interpreted that guideline is based on the. The diagram that's included in the guideline.
So here it actually says a actually that the language was excerpted in staff reports. So staff, I appreciate that I wasn't clear if it was rebate and it wasn't quoted. It said, but it's actually a directive to prevent the obstruction of you of adjacent property owners. Which is and one hand, if I read. which is, and one hand, if I read it, a really directive action. It doesn't say to minimize it. It doesn't say minimal. It doesn't say view corridors. It just says prevent the obstruction of views of adjacent property owners. So I think that's how we get to interpret that is, is probably, I think that there's a, a wide berth there. Is, is that right? That it's up to us to give meaning to that on its face, on its face, very specific limitation, which probably doesn't make a lot of sense to not obstruct any views. Is that, that would, that, that also wouldn't make sense. So we've got latitude in how we want to think about that. Is that right?
And if I could through the chair, the, the way that I've been thinking about this is that, um, very many properties in town have very significant views and most of them have at least some portion of some house in that view. So I have not interpreted it to mean that you cannot see a house. Right? And then, so that's on the one far end. And then the other far end of interpretation, you know, would be something much, you know, much further on the other side. And so I think it's up to the planning commission, understanding the context of the community and that many, many people have views that are at least partially obstructed. And that's been considered very reasonable for all of the town's history. So is this particular obstruction reasonable and overall consistent with the guidelines is the way that I've been thinking about it?
Have we made a determination that an obstruction of a view, uh, is, uh, is contrary? Does Chair Brain, uh, appears to have made a determination that a significant view, uh, was impacted. And I believe that's the basis of her determination. So I care a lot, uh, about what this means and how it's, how it's, what the precedent is. So from the time of the cities or towns incorporation to now, do we, have we made this recognizing that we've all been here for a limited period of time, uh, in memory? Uh, we've just treated this as a reasonability kind of standard?
That is my understanding. Um, I did before this project went to the A S C C, I did talk to Chair Brain about it. And she indicated that there were other projects on Goya and other projects around town that they felt like they had been able to make interpretation of the guidelines and find that those projects were reasonable because those projects have been built. None of those projects have been appealed.
All right. So we, so we don't have a lot of, uh, we don't, we may not have precedent. Uh, because, uh, on that point, as my last, uh, question is with respect to the pool, uh, is the, is the, it looks like the pool is going to be demoed. Is that right?
Yeah.
That is correct.
And is a pool, is the filling of a pool and the construction of a new pool considered to be grading?
We consider it grading, but we do not count it. It's, it does not penalize an applicant in terms of level of review of the site development permit.
So for example, there is 825 cubic yards that was identified as being uh, cut or filled on the site. It wasn't clear to me whether that eight twenty-five included, uh, the cut and fill for the destruct, for the demo of the pool and the construction of a new pool. But from a, whether the issue, whether the, uh, initial decision for the, um, I guess for the site permit is what it would be. Whether a pool is included or not in the cut and fill calculation is not material. Kara, is that right?
Laura or Kara?
Yeah.
Somebody? So do you understand my question? So we have eight twenty-five, uh, in cut and fill that's called out in the, uh, staff report. Was, was the pool demo and new pool creation included in that eight twenty-five number? That's the first question. The second question is, should I care? Uh, as a member of the planning commission, uh, because if it's over a thousand cubic yards, we have jurisdiction, original jurisdiction, uh, over the site, uh, over the site permit, because more than a thousand cubic yards of soil is cut or filled. So first question is, does the eight twenty-five include the pools? The second question is, as a planning commissioner, do I care?
So there are specific requirements about what's included in a site development permit calculation as opposed to the total green. Um, and so I know that filling in the pool does not count. Dylan does, um, the excavation of the new pool count in the site development permit calculations? We might need to get back to you on this. We might need to look it up.
So let me ask you this, Dylan, was the, uh, excavation and fill of the pool included in the eight twenty-five?
So, um, I, I'll, I'll kind of walk it back a little bit because the table that was noted in staff's report on August the 24th has a note that talks about, there was, um, staff removed eight hundred and fifteen cubic yards, um, from those calculations for the basement and a hundred and fifty cubic yards of cut for the pool. Because those were already included on sheet G 100 of the plan set. So I'm assuming you're referencing the table that's on the project plans.
I know, in staff report could be red ninety-three. It says that there are, uh, eight twenty-five cubic yards that are, yeah, I got it right. Uh, red ninety-three, it says that there are eight twenty-five cubic yards that are excavated, uh, that are cut or filled in the cut fill calculation. So I didn't look at the underlying sheets, but I got to eight twenty-five and I said, hey, I think that there is a pool that's being demoed and a pool that's being constructed. I don't see that as a line item. I think I'm going to ask the town whether that should be included and how I should think about it. And then Chair Haskell, I promise that I won't ask any more questions. I recognize I'm eating up a lot of time and I apologize.
Yeah, no worries.
Eight twenty-five, um, refers to the total, I'm looking at that page of the staff report, the total soil movement on the site. That's that table. Then underneath that, we have a separate calculation for how site development permits are calculated. And so that is only includes, um, the building pad fill, the site work cut and the site work fill. And so the total for the purposes of the site development permit is six hundred and seventy cubic yards. And so my recommendation would be as a planning commissioner, no, you probably would not care because, um, the pool would be included in the upper number and not the lower number. But regardless, it's less than a thousand square feet. It would not be subject to planning commission review based on that threshold.
What would be a thousand cubic yards?
Cubic yards.
The question, so the question, so Chair Haskell, I apologize. So the question is, is the cut and fill, is the demo and creation of the new, of the new pool, of the old pool and then the creation of the new pool incorporated in that, uh, in the eight twenty-five? And is there a portion of it that if it is, that should be carried over into the six twenty-five? And, uh, uh, and, and if it isn't, uh, how much? I don't know how big a pool we're creating and what the volume of, uh, uh, fill would be. So do we know?
We might have to, we might have to look this up as the conversation continues. So I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. Is your concern that the project may be going over a thousand cubic yards and triggering the planning commission review of grading? Or do you have some, or I want to make sure.
I want to know whether or not the, whether or not it should come to, under what can, yeah, whether it has a thousand cubic yards such that it should have come to, um, planning commission, uh, initially, uh, before we got to a point of, of appeal.
Okay.
So, and I think so far as I can tell, that's a question about how pools are calculated. And if so, how much dirt is involved? And we don't need to resolve that right now. And, uh, let me, uh, move, move away and return, uh, the, 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 the mic, uh, to Chair Haskell. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And luckily, some of my questions you, you covered. Uh, the ones that I have remaining are can the staff comment more clearly on the role of the W A S D? What's the status and what is their role?
Their role originally, they provided guidance to, um, one thirty-eight Goya Road, a project team in, attempting to resolve the issue of you quarter issue that was presented to them separately by one forty-eight Goya Road. And they provided a letter at the, that staff forwarded to A S C C during their July the thirteenth preliminary review meeting, which structured the conversation along three, um, suggested project revisions, that A S C C brought forward and their recommended conditions or changes. Subsequent to that, there has been no further communication directly from, uh, WASC to staff in relation to the project outside of that original letter.
Oh, so legally speaking, do they, do they have a role between here and, and this project, you know, being finalized? Uh, what is the legal remaining step for them, if any?
They would need to approve it as the HOA that has governance over the site. Before we would issue a building permit and that would be, um, typically we allow applicants to move forward, um, with HOA approval in, in the process. Move forward through the planning review in expectance of them getting HOA approval during the building permit review and issuance phase. That's a pretty standard, um, process for development permits.
And in this case, when would that be?
When, when they would receive approval, um, that's, that's unknown to staff at the moment. We would just, uh, it would be something, we would request the HOA approval letter before we issue the permit to them, building permit.
Okay. If I could just chime in on, on that particular issue, um, I'm, I'm not sure that, it, it sort of depends on the issue and the, um, of course, the zoning code requirements are very different than the homeowners association requirements. So if an applicant were to say to us, we would like to receive our, our building permit and our zoning entitlements before the homeowners association has approved the project. They're not always linked together. So there is a, a possibility that the, um, you know, maybe the homeowners association is a meeting or they're not, there's, they can't reach an agreement. Um, there are situations where we would issue a building permit, um, without approval of the, of the homeowners association.
Okay. So all we know is they haven't approved it. They've provided comments so far, right? Okay. Um, and then, uh, two clarifications. One is, I think in the presentation, I probably misheard, when you were talking about the approval of the A S, no, the discussion at the A S C C on the thirteenth. You said that they had recommended the one foot reduction, et cetera. But I didn't see that specificity reflected in the minutes. I might've missed it. So could you clarify what it is that the A S C C came out in the thirteenth with its recommendation on?
Sure. Um, and so the A S C C conversation was pretty mirrored to the recommendations of WASC. And so one of the thoughts was to reduce the height of the, um, second story or the house itself by one foot. Um, and then the other items that were listed such as, um, uh, rotating or, or shifting the second story massing southerly by five feet. So i- in the conversation with A S C C, that's the, 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 there may not have, I, I can't recall if it was a direct one foot. But I do remember, um, there being a discussion related to, um, if the project was modified slightly based on the WASC recommendations that A S C C would, that it was, the, the words that I remember were that it was pretty close to an approvable project based on slight modifications. So I can, I can look to see, um, through the minutes if that information is listed as we deliberate, um, if, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine. Um, I think it is important to know if they were that specific or not, um, because I didn't read it that way. And I'm, I'm very happy to be corrected. The last thing is, um, just for a point of clarification on process. In the presentation, you reference the staff making findings. Our job tonight is to make the findings. Is that correct? Um, you, you're recommending in a certain direction. I just want to be very clear what it is we're doing.
Yes, the planning commission, the authority rests with the planning commission to make the findings. Staff has just prepared our analysis for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, um, I, I appreciate the fact that the, uh, applicant and the appellant have been waiting very patiently up till now. It is important for us to get our bearings on the legal, uh, framework that we're, we're dealing with. So thank you for your patience on that. Laura, is this the moment when, um, I forget the agenda slide that the appellant, uh, makes a presentation? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and, and just in the spirit of our last conversation, um, to my knowledge, there, it, there might be a framework for the time period they, that they have and the applicant has, but there's no firm three minute or anything, right? I'm, I'm not expecting that since this is a, requires a fulsome presentation by both parties.
Because it requires a full presentation by both parties. Um, staff set out a recommended time of approximately fifteen minutes, but also indicated that the time is subject to the chair's approval and discretion.
Okay, that, yeah, I think let's work with that and then we'll see if we have, uh, the need for, for good discussion. But, but let's try and, and target that. Thank you. So with that, um, does the appellant want to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Steve Khan, the owner of one forty-eight Goya. Commission members, I'd like to thank you for giving me an opportunity to present my case. When I first saw my property several years ago, I was impressed with the unobstructed view and decided to make an offer on the spot and purchase the property. Our dream for the property was to build my last house where I could retire and spend my old age taking in the view in beautiful setting. This was very special to me because it, as it remind me my life here in Silicon Valley. I started from engineer, starting in Mil- Milipolis, eventually moving to Peninsula and working in downtown Palo Alto. And also becoming a member of the Stanford Community Studio two point two. The view held memories of my entire life here and I could see everything from this house. As I grow older, I wanted a place would hold all my memories for me in my final years and for generations to come. I fell in love with one forty Goya because I could see everything from one place. Earlier this year, when my wife and I came to see the story port at one thirty Goya, we almost fainted. Earlier this year, when my wife and I came to see the story port at 148 Goya, we almost fainted. It was the worst possible scenario blocking all the landmarks that I have brought the property for. I immediately notified Portola Valley Planning Commission and the Westridge Architect Committee with my issues. Westridge advised me to meet with Dan Siegel to work out a compromise. Initially, we were hoping a structure similar to the existing house, which is mostly one story. Mr. Spiegel told me that he will see what he can do, but also he said it was too far along in the process and he cannot make any meaningful changes. Within one week, Dan Spiegel submitted the plan to town without making any changes. For the long time, I did not hear anything from them. Finally, I was able to have the Westridge committee members be to my side. And they were very sympathetic to my concerns. They told me they would talk to the applicant to remedy the, remedy the issues. However, I did not hear anything from the Westridge or Mr. Spiegel until the day of the first ASCC meeting. However, I received the Westridge letter that day at the first ASCC meeting. Mr. Spiegel offered to lower the height by two, two feet and shift the house by five to eight feet. But also admitted that this would not substantially mitigate the view issues. Mr. Parker was incorrect. Recommendation from Westridge is the maximum possible height and the shifting the, shifting the house to the right, not just one foot or five foot as Mr. Parker was suggested many ago. At that point, I had no choice but to engage two separate architects to suggest alternate designs to mitigate the view issues. And applicants architects seem to be unwilling to make compromises or address our issues. Both architects felt the design changes were minor and the preview of everything in the original plan and even better than the current design. Those proposals were flatly rejected. Mr. Carter War, a lot of people know, recommended in very simple changes, swap the bedroom suite to the outdoor terrace on the second floor and shift the house several feet to the right to resolve the most of the corridor issues. Throughout the process, Dan Spiegel and the town planner had been repeatedly blaming me for delaying the project and the changing the view corridor. My goal always has been preservation of my view corridor, nothing else. 148 Goya will be my last house. I'm not objecting to development, but we are looking for a design compatible to the surroundings and both houses can coexist. My son Peter will be going to make a presentation. Thank you.
And hi, I'm Peter. I just wanted to take a moment to share my screen with the presentation that was submitted earlier. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Great. Again, I'm Peter Kong and the son of Stephen Maria who owned 148 Goya. I want to start with a story. I remember when my parents first bought the house, I came to visit California and they were so excited to show me because they had never seen views like this before. They said, you can see everything from here. There's nothing like it. And I was amazed when I got there that I could see Stanford campus where I went to business school. I could also see downtown and even the bay, which was really remarkable. You can even see all the way down to the East Bay where our family first came to California Milpitas in the 1980s. 148 Goya was a house that we were going to build as a family and I was going to take care of my parents as they grew older. This was a house that I would build for them and eventually come back from New York to settle. However, now the plans and hopes of our family are being crushed. When I first heard about the issue with 138 Goya, I thought it wouldn't be a big problem. We could talk to the neighbors, agree on some changes and we will all be happy. After all, we would all be neighbors. So I was confident that it should be a reasonable process. However, when I saw the design and the story polls, I thought this probably won't be allowed by the town. There usually rules about blocking views in neighborhoods like this. Furthermore, when I had my first meeting with Dan Spiegel, it was clear that there was no compromise that would be on the table and, and that, and that would be available to us. He felt he didn't need to do anything to accommodate neighbors. Unfortunately, it seems the rules so far have not applied and this is why we have been appealing and this is why we're here today. Mr. Spiegel managed to convince the ASCC that our view corridor should be shifted, even though that is not our intended view corridor. Effectively, he is dictating our own site planning on our site, although while using the same view features and maximizing it for the lot that he's designing for. Clearly, he sees value there. Otherwise, he would not be trying to take it away from us. Our main issue is a proposed plan blocks several prominent sites from our property, as you can see on this front page. Prominent scenic features such as the Dumbarton Bridge, downtown Palo Alto, Mount Diablo and Stanford Campus. I also found it funny that as Dylan was going through his presentation, he had some mischaracterized photographs because he has not actually visited the site. And also his kind of understanding of where views change and where the maximum views are affected seemed to not completely understand the topography of the land and what the views look like. And I think the commission members, since they had visited the site today, should probably understand that. So first of all, in this view corridor site, this was a chart that Mr. Spiegel first presented. You can see he's trying to artificially shift our view corridor more towards the north side and away from the Gambier household. However, we argue that there are several prominent scenic features that are happening that are being blocked by the new development. And just to reiterate, you know, we feel that the design clearly violates the design guidelines. I've highlighted the measures that I'm sure you've all gone over multiple times and we continue to ask the commission to review this. Again, Mr. Spiegel tries to claim that our only concern was Hoover Tower, but that was never the case. Only an oblique reference to being affiliated with Hoover was turned into something that it was the only site on the, on the property that needed to be preserved. And they continue to interpret that guidance, which was, I don't know where it actually came from. But they're using that as a license to throw the guidebook out the window and violate all time town guidelines regarding view corridor present preservation and prominent features obstruction. Because words are being put in our mouth and the committees are being misguided, our goal here today is to preserve as much of our view as possible as dictated by the design guidelines. One of the issues stems from, oh, hang on, let's see. I'm not going to go through everything. One of the issues stems from the characterization of the existing structure as a two-story. Currently, there is one 150 to 200 square foot loft that reaches a maximum height of 20 feet in the existing structure. It also features a sloped roof. The applicant is using this to justify an expansion to 2,800 square feet on a second floor with very dramatic ceiling heights. I would characterize the existing house as a one and a half story house, which is a house that does not have a full second floor. And the walls of the second floor do not come up to full height, only at the peak. The town should examine this definition to figure out what is an appropriate expansion of the current site. The reason for the second floor in the current design is to fully take advantage of the valley views, which are visible from the first floor as well. While we understand this from a desirability standpoint, it is now taking the same views away from another party, which is why we are protesting and appealing. As you can see here, we have the renderings that them Mr. Spiegel has presented and you could see that they're in design, the views that are being taken away from us and a lot of the features that we're currently enjoying. Furthermore, we acknowledge that Mr. Spiegel has made some modifications by reducing the height. And in this case, I suppose it's one foot at the request of WASC. However, the issue continues to remain, the primary issue remains that the views and prominent features continue to be blocked. The revised height is a de minimis response to much greater issue that is affecting the adjacent property and has not yet been mitigated. As we have examined the plans, we have found a large number of design guide violations, which we believe will set a dangerous precedent for the town if these plans are approved. As you can see here, I've highlighted several of them, but further down in the presentation, you'll see the entire list of violations and a defense on those. With that in mind, we've spent some considerable time and effort since July to come up with alternative solutions to mitigate the view impact. First with Scott Stotler and then later with local architect Carter War. This was done at great expense on our part. On August 7th, Scott Stotler made suggestions to lower and shift the existing design in its entirety by regrading the site, resulting in a larger building pad while preserving all the design features of the original plan. This would have increased the building pad to allow for a 30-foot shift to the south and lower the house by nine feet or even more with a revised plan. Unfortunately, there are no architects currently that are able to come up with and opine are, there are no architects on ASCC or the planning commission to opine on the efficacy of this plan. Furthermore, the existing structure also has a raised pad that can be visible. And if this was removed, that would show that there is a natural pad that's about two to three feet lower and it was artificially raised for the existing structure for some unknown reason. With the proposal that Scott Stotler suggested, this would be the mitigation of the view. And you could see from the, the yellow line, the story polls. This is what, where they currently are and we estimate that the impact would be about this much and would basically tuck the new structure into the existing vegetation. Later on August 18th, Carter War had a discussion with Dan Spiegel to move, with a suggestion to move interior courtyards on the second floor to the end of the house, which would in effect shift the second floor structure by 16 feet. While now not completely eliminating the view obstruction from our lot, it will largely mitigate the issue and allow us to recapture many of the sites that we cherish. And as Julie sort of mentioned, we are not asking for a complete removal of the structure. We're willing to work with compromises that would allow the house to exist where it is. But we're really just trying to recapture as much of that view and the prominent features that we're asking for. Mr. War, at, at that point challenged Dan to make these changes. However, Mr. Spiegel came back a day later and said it was not possible, even though the spaces are largely non-functional and only serve to increase the large massing on the second floor, large screen indoor areas. So if you look at this chart, these areas are what are basically encapsulated outdoor patios. And then this is a master suite. So what we're asking the applicant to do is move the master suite into this blue area and relocate the outdoor spaces here, which would again reduce the massing on the second floor and thus open up about 16 feet of the view corridor that's obstructing our, that's obstructing our, our view. And as you can see from this photo, what the impact looks like, there is a dramatic preservation of many of the features that can now be, again, be visible. Finally, we uncovered an extraordinary number of design guide violations, which somehow were missed by the ASDC. While reading the staff report, I found the characterizations and defenses to be misguided and in some cases flatly untrue by any natural English reading of the rules. Given that the ASCC made decisions based on the staff report, we appeal to the commission to reevaluate this project with additional information to better understand the site and the impact of this project. We put forth this large number of design guide violations. And while I won't go through all of them in the interest of time, here are some highlights. So on page 21, blocking open spaces, the design clearly blocks open spaces as viewed from 148 Goya full stop. There is zero argument here. Also from our pool deck, the tall, tall structure will now block any features that were previously visible from there, such as Mount Diablo, which I think many of you saw earlier today as we pointed down at the pool deck. And then on page 23, our most primary concern is the obstruction of our view of prominent features. The guideline clearly states protect view corridors on the site to maintain views of prominent scenic features. It does not say the applicants selectively choose what adjacent neighbors can and cannot see, all the while reserving those view corridors for themselves through the overbuilding of the lot. The guidelines also state prevent the obstruction of views of adjacent property owners by structures or additions to the existing structure. Here we are appealing because we are the adjacent lot. We are frustrated with a plan that adds significantly to the existing structure. I do not know how the current design is defensible without confusing the issue with confusing the issue with all these other unnecessary topics like timeline delays, tree removal, minor discrepancies in management and measurements. None of this really matters. The fact is, the proposed structure is a significant addition to the existing structure, about 2,700 square feet and takes away a large number of significant large landmarks from the adjacent property. Again, those are downtown Palo Alto, Stanford Campus, the Dumbarton Bridge, Mount Diablo and the Bay. In the interest of time, I won't belabor on the other points, but you can read them at your own leisure. Furthermore, it is clear that the applicant has many friends who are, we anticipate will continue to chime in throughout this meeting and waste everyone's time as they have never been near the site, looked at it or are affected by it. However, their feedback is not really relevant to this appeal as they have not visited 148 Goya and therefore do not have a sense for the effect of the design. The fact remains that the applicant has clearly violated the town's guidelines when considering the fact that views of key landmarks are being blocked from the adjacent properties, which is expressly forbidden by these design guidelines. And finally, I want to conclude with this point. If the applicant's proposal is passed, I'd like to request that this commission in writing commits to confirming that features such as the Dumbarton Bridge, downtown Palo Alto, Mount Diablo and Stanford Campus are no longer deemed to be prominent features worth protecting by the design guidelines. Effectively, this is what an approval of the applicant's plan would mean in terms of precedent. We asked that if 148 Goya is not being protected with regards to views of these prominent features, all future development and applications in Portola Valley should be subject to the same conditions. It would only be fair. And, and on the contrary, it would be discriminatory to single out only this lot if no protections are offered, but future projects are. Finally, I would just like to say that this whole process has really been horrific for me and my family. After all, the Kongs and the Gambiers are slated to be neighbors for a long, long time. I find it quite funny that the applicant would choose to be so aggressive in their development and create such an affront to an existing resident while planning their yet unbilled house. I can't imagine how the applicant thought this would not be a problem. And it also goes to say that they really don't seem to care about who might live around them and how they're making them feel. We invite Mrs. Gambier to come to our house and see what it looks like from our perspective and what she is taking away. Is this what she would want if our roles were reversed? I asked the commission to consider what kind of community are you creating here? What are you allowing and what type of development and manner and scope would you like to set for the next several decades? We consider this 148 Goya to be our long-term multi-generational property. What happens here today will have permanence in our lifetimes. Rushing a decision to approve this plan for convenience will have ramifications for decades and if not a century. Is this the legacy you really want to leave behind? Thank you. And I'd like to turn over the rest of my time to Stephen Paul.
Well, you, you are, I believe, the end of your time. So what does Mr. Paul have to add here? Because we want to make sure we're allocating time.
Yeah, he's not going to go over these points. He's, I think mainly going to discuss the SEQA issue that was brought up in the letter.
Okay, if you can, I'm going to ask you to keep it as short as possible and we will make sure that the applicant has an equal amount of time. Mr. Paul?
Thank you. The applicant, I forwarded a correspondence to the commission of October 21 at this afternoon. I trust the commission has read that. If they have not, I would appreciate if that letter could be put into the record, read into the record and considered by the commission tonight. Now, the applicant, in their response, which I received last night at 5:00 PM, simply ignores the total obstruction that this project creates and simply ignores the Portola Valley guidelines. By the way, the story polls that are present, as the applicant has said, represented, and I say that in the past tense, what the massing was last February. Most of the story polls have fallen down. And notwithstanding our request to staff that the story polls be put back up, what the commission was able to see today was not a correct analysis of massing. Again, my letter goes through point by point, Mr. Siegel's comments to the commission from yesterday. I finally would note that the SEQA analysis that staff went through was very cursory. I'm not disagreeing with any of the statements they made, other than it, this is an unusual circumstance in that the town, through its design guidelines, has made a determination that views are important to prevent the obstruction of views. That is the language of the guideline. And that's exactly what this project does. And so the ASCC failed to consider the guidelines and apply the guidelines, a duty they had under the town's constitution. Finally, the, with regard to the Westridge Association, again, that letter has been provided to the commission. I see it's in the staff report. And it asks the parties to work together. It does not say lower the property by one foot and you have our blessing. It requested effort be put out by both the Gambiers and your applicant to make this happen. And I've gone as fast as I can. Thank you.
No, thank you. And so Laura, do we take time now to ask questions of the appellant? Is that the next item?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to go in order. Anne, do you have questions? Anne?
Anne, now you are on mute.
Oh, no, I don't have a question right now, but talk to the other commissioners and maybe I'll think of one.
Sure. Just raise your hand. Okay, John, how about you?
See, I don't have any either. I thought it was very complete.
Okay. Nicholas?
I guess I've got two questions. One is, there appeared to have been some discrepancy about the weather trees. weather trees that were material to the view were taken down. And when this might have been taken down. And two, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Paul, should I care?
Well, we just cleaned up some small branches. As I mentioned, and maybe there may be some trees in 2011, that was before we purchased a property. So I could not really look at the pictures Mr. Parker showed me, but we haven't done any removal of big trees over there, just some branches.
So I don't, I don't quite understand the point because when I looked at Mr. Parker's slide, he showed a timeline from 2011, 2018 and 2020. So the tree is present in 2011, but not in 2018, which is before the Gambiers bought the property and also not in 2020. So I don't know. He's showing us a tree that didn't exist and then somehow assuming we're responsible for that, even when we bought the property. So I'm not, I'm a little confused by why that slide was brought up.
Yeah. All right. So I guess Nicholas, do you have any follow-up on that, like the should you care part?
Yeah, I guess in maybe a car question, which may be better in deliberation. I'll let you be the judge of that. Should an individual's decision to cut down a tree that would expose or expose them more fully or allow them to take advantage of a view, that wasn't there prior to removing a tree be considered to be a self-inflicted wound on the project? Or should that be simply the ordinary use of a person's property that shouldn't be limited by a subsequent application application for a building permit?
Barrett, do you have any?
Yes, so when you're looking at a subjective design standard, I think that's one element that goes into your determination of whether views from the property are obstructed. And it may be that you find that that removing trees from from the property is not a big deal and that won't have long-term impacts on the view. It might be that that you determine that this piece of property will likely have shrubbery and 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 plants growing on it long-term that will impact these views. So I think it's just one of the, one of the many factors that you have in your discretion.
Nicholas, anything else?
There's reference to WASC letter, which I believe was characterized as essentially okaying the project. Am I reading, am I interpreting the, as I believe that was a statement that was made by staff? Am I understanding? One, staff's statement correctly and two, has WASC essentially approved the project?
I think the the best way to characterize the letter is that it expressed some concerns, but the end of that letter did express some positive sentiment around the project as well and a likelihood of approval. That letter, I believe we received after the packet went out for the July 13th letter packet, but I read the entire thing into the record. So the entire letter is in the minutes of July 13th. So that's on red page. I looked it up earlier on red page 250. If people want to read that exact language or if you'd like us to call that up and make that part of that discussion this evening. So I think it expressed concern as well as some positive sentiment.
May I respond to that?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I am looking at the letter physically right now for July 13th. And I can only read the English language so so many ways. And it indicates that there is a conflict and the committee viewed the designs. It's a very desirable addition, but it's subject to final review and they encourage the parties to meet and confer to try and reach a comprehensive agreement. It does not approve the project and but I don't want to be the one to tell you what it says. You ought to read.
We'll, we'll, we'll call it up again as the discussion continues. Nicholas, if you don't have any more, I'm going to
Nothing more.
Ask a few others. All right. So one thing.
Sorry, I realized I did have a question here if I can sneak that in.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So this was for Peter. So when I was on the site today and we talked, you also expressed some concerns about kind of the process. And you know how things may or may not have arrived in a timely fashion during this COVID crisis and you know, whatever's going on. I wondered if you might talk to that a little bit so that I, everybody had a better understanding of what you were concerned about and trying to figure out if it's relevant.
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll outline a few things. My father might jump in if I'm missing anything. I think in the initial, during the first ASCC meeting, our notice, our physical notice was sent to an incorrect address. I think it was sent to like 149 or something like that. So we never actually received it and we only heard about that meeting starting because our renter had mentioned it and she had heard about it from somewhere else. I think she may have seen a sign. And then, so we found out about very last minute. We hadn't seen any plans and we only received the plan slightly before the meeting as the packet came out. So we had very little time to respond and we clearly had some issues. And then also with the Zoom format, you know, you have pretty limited time. And then when things are said that are misrepresented or incorrect or we have a defense, we have no way to say anything because we're effectively muted and you know, you totally, you typically enter these things as an audience member or not on a panel. So I don't have that much flexibility. So there's just a lot of misinformation. We think that ASCC considered in their decision and we weren't able to defend ourselves or actually really lay out our case properly. And even in the last ACC meeting that I presented, I submitted materials before deadline that Dylan had clearly indicated to me is what I needed to do and it did not go into the packet. It did not go into the staff report. And then I was told I only had three minutes and it was pretty much the same length. So I really needed 10 to 15 minutes to go through it. So I shortcut it and I, at that point, I think I naively assumed that the committee had read it. But as the meeting went on, it became clear that they really hadn't because they were misinterpreting some of the photographs that were on it and not really seeing the, the, the story polls properly and assuming that the photos were showing something that they weren't. So it's just been a frustrating process overall. I think the Zoom format, although efficient, you don't have to travel as much. It has its limitations and we feel like we are not able to properly express ourselves and you know, I think there've been other sort of smaller failings here and there, but we just feel like everything's working against us. We haven't had a proper discussion. The ASCC also visited our property without us being there and they came on, you know, and so they really didn't hear our case in any way. So I think, you know, the reason why we were appealing is we get the sense that they had a very one-sided biased viewpoint filled with some incorrect facts. And you know, I think that's what we're having issues with. And unfortunately, the only recourse was to pay extraordinary amount of money for this appeal process to get heard and to get our point across.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And John, that that was part of my question as well. And so I guess my last, the last question for the applicant is, you know, how, you know, at one point, the report says you're looking for one story. Tonight, you're saying you're looking for something that, you know, is more in line with retaining your, your view. I just want to know what your, your thoughts are. I mean, we like neighbors to talk to each other. We like neighbors to work things out. And you know, it would be helpful to hear just if you could summarize what, what it is you want. And then we'll move on to the applicant and they, they will have 20 minutes because that's what you had for your presentation.
Okay. I will say, I think that initial one-story comment was made by my mother primarily because the existing structure is largely one-story, as we've mentioned. The second story that has apparently re-characterized the structure is quite small. So we just assumed if they wanted to build something new, it would be relatively the same. But as this process, when, and that was way back in February before even some plans. When the plans came, clearly everything had changed. And they are allowing a two-story, which I think it seems reasonable. So then now we have a new set of circumstances and we've been trying to come up with additional solutions that would mitigate our issues such as regressing the lot and just pushing the existing design further down so we don't see it as much. And then open up that view corridor. We've also suggested if site planning, and they said, well, the site planning would be too complicated. So then we had another suggestion and say, well, if you just kind of reconfigure the second floor and move the outdoor spaces to the edge, then that opens up our view corridor by another 16 to 20 feet and we're okay with that. So kind of along the lines of what Laura said, you know, we are going to see some house, we see some house now. We just don't need to see all of that house that blocks all these key features that we really bought the property for. And if they could just work with us, that'd be great. And at one point, we've had several calls with Dan Spiegel. At one point I said, can we just get Mrs. Gambier to join in and we can have principals talk and not kind of go through these middlemen and have this fight? But he said she wasn't available and you know, I understand the circumstances why it was kind of a difficult time. But really at this stage, I think that's what we would prefer if we can just sit down with her and work through these issues and figure out what she absolutely needs and wants and let her hear what we need. We'd love to have her come to the property and see what it looks like and see if she thinks that's reasonable. And we think that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, no, that, that's helpful. I just wanted to recap. I'm gonna, Laura, I think the next point and just keep me honest on the process is the applicant and making their presentation. We had asked to keep it to 15 minutes and then there was a follow-on. So a total of 20 minutes would seem fair. You can use however much of that you need.
This is Aruna. I'm going to go ahead for just very briefly before Dan takes over. I'm still kind of reeling a little bit from what Kang said. I've been living here since 2003. The reason so many people have written in for me is because we are good neighbors. We are good citizens of Portola Valley. And in, as you can, when you see that the login, you know, the direct neighbors from from Goya are also going to be chiming in. But my neighbors here, you know, we, we get along really well. So I mean, we've been here since 2003. Work in mental local schools, you know, all that other stuff and you know, work the multiple nonprofits here. But anyway, we were lucky enough to purchase this property and it was a reset. It was supposed to be a reset. It's just a couple of blocks away. But it seemed, you know, we wanted to stay in Portola Valley because we love Portola Valley. We know what kind of houses are here, what kind of people are here, what, you know, the community spirit. And the, my husband and I have designed this house and spent a lot of time and with Dan who had designed our, our, our deck here. His family friend. So this is like, you know, it, it's all staying within the family side of things here. And you know, then another tragedy happened, but I want to make sure I follow through on the vision that we had for this house. And I'm going to go through no matter what, no matter how much deep pockets somebody else has and you know, willing to throw money around to, you know, to have this kind of head-to-head. And I think, you know, to me, it's, it's very upsetting. But I will stay strong on this and continue and I'm going to let Dan talk the rest of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
All right. Thank you, Aruna. Thank you to the commission. Share my screen. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So hi, I'm Dan Spiegel. I'm the principal of Saw. We're a hybrid design firm in San Francisco. We're the architects and landscape architects for the Gambier residents. I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing and working with the Gambiers on various projects over the last nine years. And I also wanted to note that I grew up nearby Mellow Park, took piano lessons in Ladera. I learned to swim at Alpine Hills, played soccer outside of Sox and went to college just down the road at Stanford. Which is to say that while I live and work in San Francisco, Portola Valley has been a huge part of my life. And specifically the neat connection between the landscape and community has had an important impact on our practice and how we approach our work. 138 Goya is a beautiful yet complex property. There's an existing house perched towards the edge of a hill and then a steep slope, making most of the land effectively unbuildable. Existing two-story house is idiosyncratic and adventurous, but outmoded and in disrepair. But we admire the material palette and the creation of interior and exterior. We even plan to reuse as much of the redwood siding as possible. Portola Valley has a rich history of architectural and vernacular forms using simple shapes and vertical moves to engage the landscape. Worcesters Gregory Farmhouse on the bottom right is in Scott's Valley, but is emblematic of careful blend of clear geometric moves in the landscape. These forms have become more adventurous over the years, but the desire to draw from the context from nature still guides. We set out to design a house that emphasizes the horizon using natural materials such as cedar and redwood and natural textures such as board form concrete to integrate and design with nature. We carefully studied the siding, massing and materials through drawings, models, 3D simulations. And in the end, we've developed a design approved enthusiastically by the ASCC that is well below the allowable floor areas and the allowable maximum height provided in the zoning ordinance. The largest element of the house is one-story oriented along the slope of the hill. With the second story, which twists to align roughly with the existing residents, respond to the path of the sun. The second floor represents only 24% of the total square footage of those residents. Rotated volumes also ensure that there are no continuous two-story walls anywhere on the residence. There's a popular walking path with an easement towards the bottom of the property. The Gambiers have gone to great lengths to improve the condition of this area. The proposed location of the house coincides with the existing residences, but pulls back from the edge to defer to the views below. The massing was also studied carefully to respect the views of all existing adjacent structures. A harmonious blending of new and existing trees further integrates new and old building and landscape. Here's the proposed view from the street. The existing driveway will be reused. The small, low guest house greets you first, also providing the opportunity for a fire truck turnaround. Further along the approach to the house, native trees frame the path and the overhangs provide shade. For environmental performance, grove of trees and the statue of Gambier's son, Millen, who passed away several years ago. As the materials age, the wood slats will silver, blending in further the oak trees. Here's the east elevation showing the emphasis on the horizon as the second floor notches down into the first. We pulled the possible roof deck from consideration in order to reduce the impact on the neighborhood. Rotation also ensures that undifferentiated walls never exceed one floor and provides shading for the living spaces, allowing for passive cooling and environmental performance. The guest house maintains these relationships. From the valley floor, the project is imperceptible, largely due to the shift backward. Many rooms are defined by introspective contemplative and memorial spaces, a critical driver for this project. The material palette is selected to blend with the site and repurpose as much as possible from the existing structure. Landscape softens the edges and blends the transitions, organizing around a series of inward-facing courtyards and additional screening for privacy. The story we heard from the Kangs tonight has changed quite a bit over time and this has been consistent with the way that this project is proceeded. It's been a moving target. Despite the insinuations of the property owners at 148 Goya, I think it's important to note that we did in fact carefully consider view corridors, including theirs in the design of this project. It's also important to note that the two sites are different. For instance, the floor level of 148 Goya is a full 20 feet higher than the existing and proposed floor level at the Gambiers property. This is an unedited panorama from just in front of the primary living space of 148. This is an unedited panorama from just in front of the primary living space of 148 Goya when I first met with the Kangs on February 6th. But the story pulls up, but prior to the removal of the trees in magenta. I have further documentation characterizing the removal of the trees. And in relation to the question that was raised earlier, it matters because we did significant work designing this project based on tree screening that did exist, unable to anticipate the removal of trees and the expansion of a view corridor. I should also note that Mr. Kang's presentation, Stephen Kang's presentation was all about building his future slash final home. This leads me to two points I'd like to raise. The Kangs have not lived at this property at any point in the past. And their discussion of view corridors is centered on a residence that does not yet exist, that hasn't been designed, that hasn't been approved. And so the notion of sliding, of completely redesigning our proposed project in order to conform a cherry pick views from the pool seems a roundabout and misguided attempt to delay this project for the preservation of a view that won't exist from a future house. And contrary to what would be implied by the orientation of the existing house, which is what we understand to be the protected view, to the degree that these are protected, the property owners of 148 Goya depicted the center line of the view corridor as somehow being askew to the orientation of the house. You'll notice that the house structures of the roof and the doors and windows point out this way, a reasonable inference that we made based on the existing residents. You'll also note in the slide that they called out where they redirected their view corridor to things. One, this slide was never presented to the ASCC. It was a draft presented to neighbors earlier. Second, directly in the middle of this view corridor is this large protected oak tree. You can see it on the aerials here, you can see it here, you can see it here. So the the view that they're characterizing is the most important, the most protected, does not in fact exist from the house where they currently live. Or I'm sorry, the house as it currently stands, I should be very, do not live there. These two properties are adjacent, so we're not implying that there is no visual impact on one another. But that when zoomed in, distorted and taken from cherry picked vantage points, the impact on the view is minimal and that a vast view remains intact. This is elsewhere. With the story pulls up. I should note also in response to Mr. Paul's comment, we had the story polls repaired once again late last week in preparation of this meeting. We've had to maintain them since early January. Here's a color coded section of the appellant's submission. This is a slide of their own. We added the blue in order to make clear where the proposed structure is within the photograph that they submitted. This is from their pool. You'll notice the fencing around it. And the existing trees do far more to screen the proposed structure than any sort of mitigation strategy. The Gambiers have done extensive neighborhood outreach from early in the project. Receiving written support from five of the six adjacent neighbors, as well as many others in the community who have supported the project in the past two public hearings. There's a sampling of those original letters. It's also important to note that all of the attempts of so-called compromise Mr. Paul discussed occurred in August. What he failed to mention though, was the months of intransigence that preceded that. Before Mr. Hall was, Mr. Paul was hired, and in fact, before Peter Kang was involved in the process, which happened sometime in mid to late July. I met with the Kangs on February 6th at their property. At which point they demanded that we completely redesign the house and that they would only consider a single story proposal. I offered to meet with them in person to work through this. They directed me to contact their architect, Scott Stotler. They repeated this demand in writing several times and held to this unreasonable demand for a full 159 days. Now I am aware that there is a global pandemic. It is affecting everybody, myself included. I will note on this timeline though, that the time that the planning department was closed was one month. And while things may have slowed down, that does not nearly explain the position that remained unaltered, that only a single story proposal would be accepted. I'll note that it is here in correspondence for Mr. Kang in late March, and again to Dylan Parker in late April. Given that standard, compromise seemed extremely difficult. So as talks had broken down because they would only accept a single story proposal, we decided to take the project through to the ASCC for a review. I would note that this is a reasonable procedure, but we did in fact have to have two ASCC hearings for this project, which is significantly more and longer than the standard one. After the overwhelmingly favorable review of the project in the July 13th ASCC meeting, I reached out to the Kangs and asked if they would like to discuss any of the remediation strategies posed by WASC. They didn't respond for over two weeks, no response at all. So with the blessing of the planning staff, we resubmitted the project with some modifications for approval, August 24th hearing. Only then did the Kangs imply that they would be willing to talk. This is the email I sent requesting such meeting. Even in the 11th hour, we took all requested meetings. We spent nearly 100 hours reviewing and responding to their hasty and conflicting suggestions, producing models, diagrams and drawings. We would have been thrilled if there was a clear solution here, but unfortunately there was not. I've heard it characterized here that we rejected these proposals out of hand. It's factually incorrect as I as I submitted in the document yesterday, we prepared lengthy presentations for all of the different strategies that were suggested and submitted them to the cops. We found it to be an impossible standard to meet as their stated objective changed constantly, united only by the goal of derailing the project. Initially, the critical view to protect was of the Hoover Tower, that eventually morphed into the Dunbarton Bridge. They have waffled back and forth about whether they are concerned for the impact on the pool area, the house area, or some abstract notion of the future house that appears occasionally on their documentation. That future house was discussed today, again, a view corridor that does not exist, is impossible to design towards, and is not a reasonable standard for evaluating a project. Of course, all of this shifting, all of these shifting points make it very hard to produce a satisfactory result. And of course, there was the demand for the single story house, which would in fact be smaller than the existing structure. Yesterday, we submitted a response to Mr. Paul's appeal position statement, focusing specifically on what we see as misstatements of the facts of the case. I've left this out of our presentation, but we'd be happy to discuss these issues further. I would however, like to offer a more general response here. There is no question that the project implies with the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance by a significant margin. There is no claim made of errors in the record, of omissions of important facts, or that the ASCC lacked the necessary information to review the project thoroughly, or were unable to do so for any other reason. What the appellant is asking you to do here is simply look at the same information, come to a different conclusion. Claim that the project is not sequo exempt has been feuded multiple times in this process and depends on completion of long guidelines. And even if an EIR were somehow required, what would be the supposed environmental impact? Using this argument as a cornerstone of the appeal process exposes the cynical nature of the entire exercise. It's an attempt to stall and pressure my client by introducing and forcing a protracted and costly and painful process on weak claims. The appeal however, makes no mentions of the findings made by the commissioners in the two ASCC hearings. ASCC unanimously unanimously supported the aesthetics and concept of the design, and they overwhelmingly supported the project as a whole. And although we did not find a cooperative partner in the owners of 148 Goya, we made a series of concessions in the project between the first ASCC meeting and the approval meeting on August 24th, including reducing the overall height by one foot. We had offered to shift the mass over by five to eight feet, but in writing that that modification was rejected by the Kangs. In the end, through sensitive site massing, context driven form, robust community process, and integration with the landscape, Mrs. Gambier's new home will provide her with an even deeper connection to this place and this community. This was the finding of the planning department who reviewed the project multiple times and each time made a recommendation to approve. This was the overwhelming finding of the community who have made their voices heard in public hearings and beyond. And this critically was the finding of the ASCC who reviewed the project twice in public hearings, put in four one to approve the proposal. I would also like to add that time matters. Mrs. Gambier husband, Mrs. Gambier's husband, Sam Gambier, passed away shortly after the first ASCC meeting. And this project has been one that has been taken on under enormous enormous weight. And so I resent the insinuation that that Peter Kang just made that Mrs. Gambier was unwilling to cooperate in this process. She has made every effort from long before he was involved to reach out to the community and to build a new home for herself to imagine a better future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So per our prior process, I'm gonna turn it out over to Anne to lead us off with any questions that they she might have for the applicant. Yeah. Okay, if she's not.
No, here I am. I was chatting away on mute. The on the, you said that you had offered at one point to shift the house by five feet, that the Kangs rejected that. Did you show us a slide with that? I couldn't read the tiny writing.
Did I show you a slide with the design revision?
Oh, no, with the letter that rejected that five feet. Or was that just a description that you gave us?
It's on the timeline here. I can provide the email to you if you would like. That would be fine. Would you like me to pull up the email now or could I do it while we?
You can do it later. Yeah. And then my other question was, you said the current story polls are accurate. Did you mean they're standing straight up and not falling over or have they been reduced by the one foot?
They have not been reduced by the one foot yet. They, but Mr. Paul characterized them as being in disrepair. And we had them repaired last Friday.
Okay, so what I saw there today.
Should reflect the the height prior to the one foot lowering.
Right. So if I, in my mind's eye, if I made it one foot lower.
Correct.
I would be seeing the accurate thing. Okay, thanks. That's all my questions.
Yeah, I just want to chime in here and say that, you know, it costs a lot of money to keep those polls up and know the first ASCC meeting, second ASCC meeting, this one. I would, you know, and then all of this and Dan's and team's time, it's a lot of money. And of course, the delay is a lot of money, holding costs is a lot of money. But this this whole project is a lot more than just financial to me.
Thank you. John, do you have any questions?
Just one actually. So I would actually, just like Anne, which is the five to eight foot. So it's right now, it's not proposed to move the five to eight foot.
That's correct. In consultation, we were advised that that would not lead to them approving of the project. And so we decided not to do that.
That's going to cost a lot of money to, you know, design it again. So.
It would have required a full new creating a drainage plan. It would have required significant.
Okay, that was, that was exactly my question, which is not just moved, you know, shove it over. It's new work.
That's right. It would have been significant new work, which we were willing to do, but it was rejected as a solution.
Okay, that's it for my questions.
Okay, Nicholas, how about you?
So now I had a chance to look a little bit more closely at the WASC letter, which says that between 20 to 25 degrees would be limited by the by the new project. If we were to move the project, if we were to make the modification by moving it over by five feet, would how much of that view would?
Yeah, same number, different place. So that that was, I think, the crux of the problem. And I should note that in their letter, they also said of a view corridor of approximately 200 plus degrees.
Yeah, yeah, that's like 10% plus or minus of their view is being obstructed. As I, as I got it. So they're moving the moving the mass over by five feet wouldn't have any effect on on the view, I guess on the primary view.
Right, the question is.
That you could but but moving it over five feet is going to chop it off the back. It's a camp bed space.
And I guess the question is of, you know, from where?
Yeah.
What with regards to the view? And so that's a thing that we've been having a difficult time pinning down throughout this entire process. And so it makes it difficult for me to those those solutions.
Thank you. I've got nothing more.
Okay, and I don't understand what the tree thinks about and to Nicholas's point, I don't quite know that I care. But there was some mention about the grading, the pad being on an elevation and some discussion in the correspondence regarding grading and being able to, you know, do something with the grading. Can you comment on what that would entail? And was that rejected for practical reasons, for cost reasons, anything you could put around there?
Yeah, so we did some rough calculations of the some construction notes on my window, but we did some rough calculations of the proposal that Mr. Stotler provided. I should say the sketch that Mr. Stotler provided where he wanted to effectively hilltop the top and move the grade down to what he perceived as natural grade. He was identifying a swale and a setback, which is the low point of the property as it begins to move down the hill. And it's not reflected in the actual current existing grade of the existing residence. We are proposing to maintain the grade top of finished floor of the existing residence, which has stood there for over 60, approximately 60 years. In our rough calculation, we were showing an additional cut and fill of well over 3,000 additional cubic yards in order to do that. It's a really immense amount of land and dropping it all five feet, we feel would be an obvious violation of the design guidelines as well. As I mentioned, it's a reasonably complex lot. So you know, there are constraints.
Okay. Those are my questions. Laura, where are we on our agenda here? Is it now time for public comment? Or is there a rebuttal type response, I forget, on the agenda?
Next would be public comment. That way, if the appellant and architect want to include any response to any of the public comments in their closing remarks.
Okay, so then we're gonna look for the attendees to raise their hand. And the first one to raise it is Monica Chaney. Can you give your address, please, when you speak, just so we have it for the record?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me. It's Monica Chaney. And I'm at 158 Goya. So I'm the uphill neighbor to both of these two properties. And I, I was going to try to call in closer to a public comment, but I I found that I really wanted to listen to this, I think, close to two hour and 15 minute discussion. And I you know, first of all, thank you all for your time and careful explication of the issues. I want to say first of all, that as a neighbor, we felt we were very much consulted by the Gambier family when they were going about making the plans for this house. I'm very familiar with both of these properties because we've owned our home since, it's been in the family since 1969. And we've had very good friends who've owned both of these properties in the past. And so, you know, when I listen. And so, um, you know, when I listened to the totality of the, the issues presented tonight, it just seems that there's a point at which if you follow the rules that are already established in a town for building, and you, you do as much as you can to accommodate a neighbor in a reasonable fashion. It's just extremely hard for me to understand what standard we can use. If we're not going to use the standards that are set forth in our current set of building codes and zoning laws. And I, the SEQA thing is something that I can't even comprehend being applicable because, um, it seems if it's applicable to this property, it would be applicable to, I guess, maybe a third to half of homes in Portola Valley where there's a view, um, involved. And so I, I, I think we'd want to think very carefully about invoking SEQA for residential building applications. But you know, it, it makes me sad that there's this conflict. I just, I, I understand that there's a, views are kind of a finite resource, but they have, it is a tricky property and I don't think we can change the rules halfway along, I, I guess is my, my concern. And, um, I also think that the planning commission, you know, should give very strong deference to the ASCC. Um, the, the primary body that, that engages in this type of approval, um, in our community. And so, you know, as, as a neighbor who hopes that one day this will all, um, kind of improve, I, I really just, I, I want to say that I, I support this project and so does my husband. On behalf of the Gambier family, I know they've done extraordinary things and they've been wonderful neighbors. And, um, you know, I, I really just hope that they can move forward. It seems like an excruciating amount of cost and time involved. And I, I understand that the Kang family is, is concerned about their view. I, I, I don't mean to be unsympathetic. I just, I don't understand what, what our metric is going to be if it's not using the rules that already exist in our books. So it seems to me that the ASCC made the findings already. Um, it's hard to kind of change the goalposts down, down the road. Again, my sympathies and I hope that, um, we can move this forward and, and have a neighborly glass of wine soon. That's all I have to say. I hope that you can move this forward for the Aruna and her, her home.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we've got Gil with their hand up here. Gil, could you identify your full name and your address, please?
Hi there. It's, uh, Gil Kleiman, uh, and I'm here with my wife Yasmin. And we're at 128 Goya, which is kind of the bookend to Monica. Hi there, Monica, if you can hear us. Uh, we're a higher property, kind of in the other side of these two properties, a bit to the southwest, I would say roughly. And, uh, this is all sort of new to us, the, the sort of discourse here. I think, uh, going way back, I'd echo Monica's comments. So I think Mrs. Gambier was very collaborative when she started this project. She consulted us and brought us in and we unfortunately weren't available to go to some of the initial meetings, but we've been very supportive of it from the beginning. And we're very sympathetic, being longtime Portola Valley residents. I've been here since 2000. Uh, had several properties and I'm, I appreciate the, everyone's, uh, discussion here about views. We're very focused on views and what the views are. And that's, that was a major, uh, calling point for us, uh, building our house here, which we built at 2000, 2009 as a, as a kind of similar situation with a 50s house that needed to be redone. So we started over and, uh, we'd like to thank all the committees that we worked with. It was a fantastic process. And it was extremely collaborative with, with the neighbors. And I, I think maybe a comment here, um, Portola Valley, I think is a very community oriented place. That's why we love it. And, uh, I think the word neighbor really has some real meaning here. And we have a very sort of small neighborhood that's sort of defined by Goya, Goya Road. So, um, I, I think for, for the Kings, you know, we welcome you to the neighborhood. I would say, I don't think we've ever seen you here. So I don't know how long you actually were in the property. Uh, I think you've talked a lot about the views and the dreams that you have about what house you might have. But from listening here, it sounds like maybe you haven't ever occupied the property. And I, I think we're also hearing a lot of redesign of Mrs. Gambier's house, which is, you know, not a process we're used to seeing. And I don't know for the Kings, if you've already designed your house or where you are in, in the process of doing that. But I think, uh, we kind of resonated with the comments. It's very hard to design around a house that doesn't exist and define what the view corridors might, might be for that. So, um, that'd be something maybe we'd like to hear a little bit more about. And, um, and the other thing, I, I think, given all the concerns here, which we, we hear, uh, we're a neighbor. We would have potentially been interested in hearing what your objections had been, because it's really does seem like it came up maybe at the last minute and put a stick in the spokes of a very complex process. And maybe we, we could have helped by, by weighing in with our, our, our feelings. So we don't want to say too much more, but just we're, we're very supportive. We don't, we really are uncomfortable with this sort of confrontative process, which is very unusual for Portola Valley. And, uh, I, I'm not sure the Kings, where, where you actually are located, if you're nearby or, uh, in a different community. But I think, um, we hope that you do become a neighbor and could, hopefully this, this isn't representative of what would be considered neighborly behavior.
And this is Yasmin Kleiman. I wanted to make a quick comment as well.
Wait, 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 wait. We are going, you have to raise your hand on the, the, the next person is Catherine.
We're in the same family. Okay. Fine.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I.
Yes, yes. We're, we're, I'm, I'm, I'm the, uh, uh, I'm the spouse of Gil Kleiman. So.
Okay. Just want to keep it short. We're trying to aim for about three, four minutes. Um, you know, we're flexible, but.
Sure. No problem. I just wanted to bring another perspective, uh, because the, the Kings talked about family and how they wanted to, you know, have the generational property for themselves. And I think that's, that's a point that I, probably the committee is aware. But when we found out and we met, uh, Mrs. Gambier, uh, we really were hoping that her project would go through. Even with, when, uh, you know, when her late husband was here, because they've been such long Portola Valley residents and they've raised their only son here who unfortunately passed away, um, from cancer. And this is some, this is a project that means so much to them as a family, because they want to continue. Mrs. Gambier wants to make this her home and she wants to get old in this property. If, in a neighborhood that she's lived all, you know, most of her life and had all of her family life. So this is something that I wanted to bring up in case people are not aware. And I want to make sure that also the Kings are aware of this, because this is not a place, it sounds like maybe you guys, you know, the Kings ever really spent that much time in this neighborhood, but this is a neighborhood that Mrs. Gambier has spent a lot of time with. And in fact, all our neighbors that we know, as well as our, you know, we look forward to having her as a neighbor is, uh, looking forward to having her and the hope her, you know, she can achieve her dream and her family's dream. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Catherine Fitzgerald, you're next, please. About three, three or four minutes if you can.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I'm actually on the East Coast, so it's kind of late for me at this point. Yes. And I've been, um, present at, uh, the two ASCC meetings and have, um, privy to the whole communication. I am a really good friend of Aruna's, one of, she's one of my best friends. And I have been with her, with this, um, whole process from the very beginning. And I know the effort that she put in to the progress or pro, but the progress, um, and the project. And, um, I, I have to emphasize that she has been, um, more than, um, accommodating to all of her neighbors. We live at 15 Dos Loma Vista, right down, uh, one, two blocks away. And I walk the path behind Aruna's house, um, almost daily. And, uh, she has done a beautiful job with, um, the preparation of the land. Very conscientious about, um, what she is doing with that property. And she, in turn, she does absolutely care and, and is, uh, working toward, uh, an agreement with the neighbors. Hopefully that will be achieved. It does worry me. Um, Portola Valley is a very, um, open and, um, unified town. And I, I am concerned that this contention is happening. I'll just say my husband and I fully support Aruna's build. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for dialing in from afar. All right. I'm gonna see if there's anybody else that wants to make, uh, public comments on the project. I'm not seeing any. So Laura, uh, coming back for follow-up comments from the applicant and the appellant, is that right?
Um, we received comment letters that came in after the packet was posted. And according to our Zoom procedures, now is the awkward time where I read those aloud. So I'm going to ask everyone to bear with me, um, and I'm going to read those letters. So we've got, um, I believe we have seven total letters. So I've got it on two screens here. So I'll be reading over on this. So someone stop me if, um, if we need to do that. So. They never told me this would be part of my job. It's. So the first, um, email is from Mark Leslie. Hello, I am writing this letter in support of the Gambier project. I am a neighbor at 738 and 770 West Ridge Drive on the corner of Goya. I am also a friend of the Gambier family. I have been closely following the approval process of this project. From the presentations of the view, it is clear that the Gambier project makes only the smallest intrusion on the vast view that is currently available to the owners of 148 Goya. As we have watched our trees grow on our property over the last 20 years, we can say with authority that this normal act of nature increases intrusion over time more than this project ever would. Furthermore, it is my understanding that the owners of 148 are absentee landlords. I think it is important to give deference to community members who actually reside here rather than to outsiders. Finally, when a new house is built in a neighborhood, it will always be different than that of the old one. There is never any guarantee that every possible view from every possible neighbor will be preserved. The test is to see if the intrusion is quote reasonable. If this was a three plus story, big footprint mansion, it might be considered unreasonable. The Gambier house is truly beautiful and architecture. Masterpiece that is a pleasure to view. I consider this appeal to be extremely unreasonable intrusion on the rights of Gambier family to build their dream house. I strongly recommend that you deny this appeal. Um, and that's signed Mark. Next, um, is an email from CERAC Roding. Hi Dylan, for the appeals for 138 Goya on October 21st, I want to send in my support again. It is a remarkable misuse of time and money for everyone involved, that the one neighbor that keeps complaining about this plan cannot seem to accept the four to one ruling by the ASCC. The plans for this building are not only adhere to all codes, but they show that the planned building will be gorgeous and an asset for the town. The neighbor who keeps voicing concerns about this project is acting completely inappropriately. I am HO in my humble opinion. He does not even live in his own building. All the best. CERAC Roding, 40 El Hambre Court, Portola Valley. Next is from Richard Levy. I am a neighbor and a friend of Aruna Gambier. I attended the last hearing where the vote was four to one in favor of completing the latest project submittal of completing the latest project submittal. As a 20-year Portola Valley resident, I am appalled that this project can be further delayed by a frivolous claim from an absentee landlord, that an expansive view from another site would have a miniscule percent of the view blocked by new construction. This violates common sense and common decency. We should be better than this in our beautiful community. There should be a precedent that frivolous claims, if it claims, if turned down, should pay the extra cost involved in the delay. And then there's an email from Jaclyn Kubica. And there's an email and then there's an attachment. And in the email, she says that she's attaching two things for submission for the Gambier meeting on Wednesday night, which she asked us to add to the record. Um, there's a letter that she previously submitted and there's a photo of the neighbor's yard. She notes that the ASC approved the modification of the roof line in the photo, which unfortunately cobbles together two different materials and is highly visible from my home. Only a fraction of the Gambier's home would be visible, yet the neighbors protest. There is not some guarantee here in PV that one is entitled to pristine view. Buildings are part of the land. We make them as gentle to the eye as possible. The Gambier's project accomplishes this. The approval of the Gambier project should hold. And then the letter that she included, um, let me see. Um, it repeats the same thing. And then she says her original notes. This one, I believe, is already in the record. So I'll go on to the next message. This message is from Tracy Wang. Um, hello Dylan, I would like to express my continued support for Aruna Gambier's project at 138 Goya Road. My husband Fred and I live around the corner on West Ridge Drive and feel that the design, the indoor-outdoor living and fit with the look and feel of Aruna's property well represent Portola Valley and the beautiful homes that have been built, continuing to be built here. I attended the previous meetings where her project was approved and saw widespread community support in addition to that of the ASCC for this project. I am dismayed to hear that a property owner who does not even live in our community wants to derail the future home of a longstanding community member. Aruna's plans do not break any rules or exceed any of the guidelines in terms of building requirements. She made no mistakes in her submission, which was approved after thorough analysis. To go backwards and allow credence to a baseless appeal is a bad precedent, which will encourage discord and delays and will waste valuable PV town committee time. Thank you for time, taking the time to read my letter. Best, Tracy Wong. Next is a message, um, from Carolyn and Sam Quazada. I'm sorry if I'm getting that wrong. Dear town of PV ASCC members, we are writing in support of the proposed project by the Gambier family on Goya Road. We have reviewed the plans and believe that the Gambiers have spent a considerable amount of time and effort to ensure that their home blends into the natural surroundings and minimizes the obstruction of views from their neighbors. We are longtime residents of PV and without hesitation, support the Gambier project. The plans meet the Portola Valley guidelines, so we believe that the house project should be approved. Thank you for your time. And then there is one final, uh, letter that we received. Um, dear Mr. Parker, we write once again to express our continuing support for the Gambier submitted project at 138 Goya that was approved by the ASCC on August 24th. And explicitly, a property owner who doesn't even live in our community is appealing the ASCC decision that received the overwhelming support of the committee. It is unfathomable that a project that has received such enthusiastic support from neighbors and community members would be held up for months because of the frivolous complaints of a non-resident property investor that has no involvement in our community. We find it offensive that Aruna Gambier has been subjected to this ordeal when she has followed all the rules and guidelines that have been set forth for her project. We respectfully urge the committee to reject this appeal immediately and allow Aruna Gambier to proceed with her project without further delay. Sincerely, Greg and Brenda Monks, 393 Golden Hills Drive. So that concludes the public comments, um, that we received after the packet was published.
And earlier, Mr. Paul's asked for a letter to be read into the record, but it's a very long and complicated one. And I'm not sure when it was received, if it was received in the timeframe that requires that. Could you comment on that, Laura?
And I think I'll also ask Cara to weigh in on this. We had set a time limit of noon on the day of the meeting to receive public comments. That would be reviewed and, and put into the record. Um, as the commission is aware, we did receive some late comments today. And we decided it was best to forward those on to the commission. But I, I don't know that those need to be read into the record according to our policy. So I don't know if, if Cara has an opinion on that.
Yes, I, I don't think they need to be, um, read into the record as the, um, commission was given copies of those documents as soon as we received them. And hopefully you've had time to read them. If you haven't had time to read them, you know, it's, it's a. If you haven't had time to read them, you know, it's appropriate for you to take a break and to read them at that time.
Okay.
So the you know, we received an email in late in the afternoon that had a number of attachments of letters to it. Is that that's what we're talking about?
Yes, we're talking about the particularly, we're talking about the letter from Mr. Paul on behalf of the appellate that came in late this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so I guess the question is, does anybody need a break or have people had a chance to look that over? I'm gonna assume we've all read it unless you weigh in. Okay, Laura, thank you for the oratory. I think we're ready for the next point in the process here. It's getting late, so I think it's just a chance for last comments and due of public comments by each of the appellate and the applicant, is that right?
Yes, the appellate and then the applicant. And through the chair, I would recommend that you give them a timeframe that you'd like them to stay with.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want this to go longer than five minutes on each side, please. So with that, I'll ask the Kangs to start.
All right, thank you. I'll try to keep it short. I was gonna go through our responses, but I think at this point they're kind of petty issues and it's something I really don't want to focus on. I really do appreciate the letters that came in. It was actually nice to meet some of the neighbors over the Zoom. We're actually here this week. I personally live in New York and have been flying in to help out my parents with this issue because they've just been kind of boggled by the process. But yeah, we would love Gil and Yasmin and Monica, we'd love to meet you guys and have a conversation. We'd love to invite you over to the site so you can see it and see if that changes your opinion or what you think. You know, would love to ask you if you were able to see downtown Palo Alto and it gets blocked by a neighbor. Is that something you would be excited about? And that's kind of the situation we're in. So we're just trying to defend the key features of our property that we really bought it for. And, and you know, it's, it's kind of funny. All these people are making assumptions about who we are and what we're gonna do with it. I grew up in this area. I went to Menlo School in Atherton, a lot of friends in Portola Valley. You know, I swam at Menlo and went to the East Coast for college and then came back, lived in Menlo Park for business school. And I was here and I lived in the San Francisco Bay Area for 10 years after college. So I'm also a local, maybe not really specifically Portola Valley, but it's not an area that's foreign to me. So I just find this assertion that we're kind of like these, you know, landlords that aren't involved with the community. I mean, one of the issues right now, the reason why we're not building is I'm sort of building a life in New York and I'm not ready to move back. And I'm sorry if that's, you know, that you want to control our plans, but that's just the situation. And I find it very odd that that's kind of coming up as an issue. But in any case, you know, again, we're happy to work with you. We would love to sit down. I found it shocking that you were keeping in touch with other neighbors in Goya and keeping them abreast of the situation personally. My father said that he personally hasn't met you. I don't feel like there's been an outreach. I feel like we've tried. We asked Dan Spiegel one time to see if you wanted to join the conversation because we thought that that would be more efficient. Because, you know, I think Dan is quite eloquent and very smart. I think he's probably a better lawyer than architect because we're having a lot of trouble keeping up with all these arguments. But, you know, we like to work together and be happy neighbors. And it's, it's been hard. You know, it's been really hard for me to put together all these arguments. I woke up at 3:00 AM this morning, so this is really late for me as well. And, you know, we're just hoping to get this resolved. I think it's a frustrating process for everyone. And again, we'd like you to come up and see what the impact is and, you know, see if you think that's something you'd be okay with if you had this property. So that's all we're really asking. And, you know, we like the commission to carefully consider both sides. I think we're both kind of in similar positions, so, you know, we defer to your decision.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the applicant, I don't know whether Mrs. Gambier or Mr. Spiegel want to take this on or both, but you've got five minutes.
Okay, I'll be real quick. You know, I did try and reach out. The only person I could reach out to was the renter and I told her to forward all the information. And she would not give me their direct email when I was first reaching out to all the other neighbors. So the reason I have so many letters of support is because we are good neighbors. We are good citizens of Portola Valley. And all of this delay is costing a lot of effort, time, mind space. And, you know, it should tell you, first time in 15 years that an appeal has been done is it tells it all after a four to one confirmation. So it's, I somehow feel that this is just a way to, you know, just ring me. But anyway, Dan, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Aruna. I'll add only quickly that I think it's a, it's a dangerous thing to have a thorough and detailed process that goes through the ASC through multiple different hearings. And to have a precedent that that all that really needs to be done is to just kind of wait in the weeds until the very last minute and then continue to continue to, you know, like appeal the process, add new elements at the very last seconds. We had, as you can see in our timeline, months and months of opportunities to discuss. And Mr. Kang made it very clear to me that not only was he not interested in considering a, anything other than a single story residence, but that he wouldn't even be willing to sit down and engage with me or Aruna directly. Peter doesn't know this. I mean, I'm sure his father told him otherwise, but Peter wasn't involved until mid-July. I wish he had been. I feel like maybe we could have had a better dialogue about these things, but it wasn't the case. And this time matters. The time is effort on everybody involved, from the town to the neighbors, to Mrs. Gambier, to me, to the entire team. And it matters a lot in that, you know, significant events happen in this period of time. And nobody knows that better than Aruna does. And so to wait out the clock until the very last second and then feign, you know, feign cooperation. Mr. Warren contacted me for the first time one week before the August hearing is, I think, disingenuous and also really, really troubling for the entire process of, getting projects done in a way that supports the community in Portola Valley.
Thank you. So Laura, now it's time for our discussion at the commission, right?
Um, yes, there were also a couple of questions that came up from commissioners that I think we'd be able to answer at this point. So through the chair, if we can go ahead and do that. To Commissioner Tark's early question about cut and fill for the pool. The municipal code specifically does not include the cut and fill for the pool. So it was not included in the calculation and it should not have been included in the calculation. And then Dylan had a answer to an earlier question as well.
Yes, so Chair Haskell asked regarding the assertion that ASCC at their July the 13th meeting suggested a change of one foot height reduction. And so in reviewing this meeting minutes, so this would be referenced page 250 and 251 of the red sheets or red pages of the staff report. The WASC letter is referenced in dialogue. However, Commissioner Sil notes that the WASC comments were well thought up and it was worth the design team looking at moving the house five feet and lowering the height by a foot, which are relatively minor adjustments. And then that one foot recommendation is echoed by Commissioner Wilson on page eight or page 251 of the red pages. And Commissioner Ross makes a note on the same page about a 12 feet versus 11 feet reference to the interior for floor plates. So that's where staff derived the one foot reduction from the ASCC because that is not directly referenced in the WASC letter that is discussed during that portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, one, one other thing, I'm through the chair if we may. I want to make sure that there's not a perception that staff has mischaracterized the letter from WASC. I did read it into the record, but the whole letter is there as well. And that's it, red page 305 and 306. They definitely express concern about the view, but then they also finish the letter by saying that the committee feels that it would be a very desirable addition to Westridge. But that does seem to imply that the view issue would be resolved between the parties. So I want to make sure that everyone has that reference in front of them and is able to read it for themselves because we had a kind of difference of opinion about how to characterize that letter.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. All right, so bringing it back to the commission for discussion, I'm gonna go in the same order I've been using. I'll start with Ann for her thoughts. Now, in terms of the goal of this evening, I'm gonna refer us up to the summary of possible actions to be taken on red page three. You know, deny the appeal and uphold the ASC decision. Deny the appeal and uphold the decision subject to revised conditions of approval. Approve the appeal, rescind and
Today I'm gonna help you keep your kids free from ice cream stains.
Okay, all right. Approve the appeal, rescind the August 24th approval and remand or continue the project to a future hearing with instructions to modify the project based on feedback and suggestions. So and then, you know, there is a de novo review. I'm not, you know, A, are there any other issues beside the view that each of you want to raise and consider? And if we can go through and just figure out where people are on the scope and then your initial view on what action you would take. And then we can circle back. I think this is complicated, but I don't want to address things that people aren't concerned about. So go ahead, Ann, if you want to start.
Yeah, you asked us to talk about the scope of topics that we thought we should talk about.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And then recommendation.
Yeah, okay, no, many issues have been brought up. The SEQA just does not seem relevant to me as one of the speakers pointed out. If this project meets SEQA, then just so many others in Portola Valley would too. And on the things with the massing in size, there were pictures of an airplane and some cargo containers. Those, none of those resonated with me. I have, you know, can think of examples in town of things that do that. So for me, the only thing worth really addressing is the view question, which I have a lot to say about, but.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? Because I have a feeling that would be a useful thing to hear.
Okay. And, you know, so the view, these design guidelines, a lot of this hinges on this. The wording is prevent the obstruction of views of adjacent property owners by structures or additions. You know, if I only had those words to go by and nothing else in my life, I'd think, ooh, I don't know exactly how to read that. And is it, we can't obstruct the view at all? And what about a future house? But the picture, as other people have already shown this in the design guidelines, has one house in the back with a view and one over here. And clearly, the house in the front blocks a portion of the view. This is given in the design and guidelines as what should be done. You know, what should not be done is house, you know, absolutely in front of the others. There's a very new house right next door to me. And you know what? We have a view of one part of our house and this house blocks it more. You know, it's like two feet higher than the old house was. So I know it happens and it's kind of accepted that houses in front of other houses will, you know, block parts of views of houses in the back. You know, it's why sometimes people buy multiple lots is so they can be sure nothing, nothing gets built in the front lot. Um, so I ask myself what's reasonable to judge this and how much of a view should you block? Can be allowed to block? And the thought experiment that I use is to pretend that I'm a developer and I own both lots. I'm gonna build a house on both lots and I want to maximize the money I can sell it for both houses, right? What would I do on the front house? I'd build it, you know, somewhere like the house in question is proposed and take some view. And then the house, you know, I would not put the house, you know, just right in the center of the houses in the back. But by the same token, I wouldn't put the house down in the, in the gully, you know, and have it only look at trees or be down in the creek or something and save all the view for the house up top. You know, I think I'd do something like what's proposed here. The Gambier house is kind of over to the right. It's not as, to the maximum that it could be. Yes, it's gonna have great views. But I have to tell you, when I was at the uphill house today, it has stunning views. You know, what's kind of left is amazing, right? Or just looking and looking, it's got, you know, Mount Diablo, the bay. There's no question to me that the uphill house has fabulous views. And so by my thought experiment method, it's like, yeah, this is reasonable. And the house in the back can design their house, so it's over here. You know, I, listening to the Kangs, I do feel it's just very sad that what they have their heart set on is downtown Palo Alto and Hoover Tower, which is blocked by certain, you know, places on the property. You know, and I don't know what to do about that. I kind of feel like if you buy a property though, and there's, you know, just one certain thing that you've got your heart set on, you know, you need to make sure that other houses can't build in front of you. You know, I don't think it's reasonable to expect other people to realize that was your, you know, your favorite item in the view place and not build that. It just is too bad to not appreciate the view that's remaining, which is, you know, it's wide, it's big. It's just out there. I feel like, um, now I'll be very interested to hear from my fellow commissioners, but now I'm leaning towards supporting the decision that was made by the ASC.
Thanks, Dan. John, I'm gonna ask you to go next.
Yep. Okay, I'm not on mute, good. So I started out with the three, basically, you can tell from my initial question of a process perspective, looking at three pieces of the concern. Failure to comply with the Valley zoning code. I don't think there's any question that this complies with our code. Number two was following the design guidelines. I'll come back to that. Number three was, is SEQA an issue here? I think it's pretty clear it's not. So when we come back to the guidelines, let's be clear about that. They're guidelines. They're not code. They are subject to interpretation. And I have to say, our experts on that interpretation are the ASC. And I am very wary of trying to decide that on this one particular case that I suddenly know more than the ASC in terms of their considerations and how they look at this. I do have to say, having visited the properties, that it does make a difference to the view of the Kangs. On the other hand, you know, there's been a discussion of trees and what was there and what was not there. And, you know, trees come and go and they'll continue to come and go. And you know, that changes the view. And you know what? So do houses. And we have code that allows houses of certain size, certain sizes. And lots of discussion has occurred about how big they could be and how small they could be with the lots and the slope of the lots and how close is the edge. As a community, we have an incredible record of trying to manage that. And this proposal fits those items. So yes, their view will be less than it was before. But, you know, I liken that a lot to people who buy houses near airports and then start complaining about the noise. and then start complaining about the noise. It's, everybody has the right to build their property out to our current code. If we change the code, then that could change what people could build. But they're not proposing anything outside of code. On the other hand, you know, there was concerns about people making complaints about the appeal. And you know what? We have an appeal process for a reason. And it's perfectly okay in my mind for the Kangs to say, I want to use that process. You know, we, we, let's, you know, we do not feel good about this. And we're going to try to make it work to our favor. And I think that's perfectly within their right. And there was also discussions I saw on people sending a letter saying about whether they're in the community or not. And you know what? That, I think that's kind of irrelevant. They own the property, they have rights of the property. Whether they're currently here or not is a moot point. So, you know, I'm not considering that in my thought process here. I think that there were also a number of discussions of the very sad personal issues associated with the folks trying to build 138. As much as I might sympathize with them personally, that's also not relevant in my mind to the discussion here. It's, what are you allowed to do with the property or not? So I sympathize with them, but I don't think that's something we have to consider. I am very sad about the amount of conflict we have here. Somehow, and it's not just in Portola Valley, but it seems to be across the nation, that we seem to be increasing that level of conflict. And I'm, we could perhaps decide in this case that it was associated with COVID and some miscommunication or what have you. But it appears to me that all of the process, things have been handled. I was earlier concerned that maybe there were some process issues that hadn't been followed. But it seems to me like we have done the right things on the various committees and on staff. So I would leave that out of being any concern. So I'm pretty much heading towards approving or denying the appeal and upholding the ASCC decision. I will say, however, that even if we proceed with that, that actually doesn't preclude the, both the Kangs and Aruna Gambier making any further changes that might be satisfactory, but it would not be something I would require in any way, shape, or form in that. That's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Nicholas, where are you first on the scope of, you know, what should be addressed? And then on those issues out of the four actions we can take, what are your current thoughts?
I'd share, you know me better than that. On the issue of sequoia, I don't see that there's any material issue here. I don't find this to be an unusual condition. I think that the nature of a suburban rural in communities such as ours has changed. And with residences even within an acre and a half or less of each other, you're going to have some modification of views over time. And I don't find that to be unusual. And I concur with the previous expressions that if this were a exception to the exemption, then the exemption would be swallowed. And I'm not sympathetic to that at all. On the issue that are before us, my thought is that the only issue here is with respect to the view. I think that was also the only issue that was material to the ASCC. My compliments to Mr. Spiegel for a modern interpretation of a green brutalist structure with mixed media. Very interesting. I also, I am sympathetic both to the need to follow the rules. Unfortunately, I think the rules here are not as clear as they could be. I think that they're amenable to interpretation. I'm also aware of the expertise of the ASCC. But I'm also aware that this is a de novo review. So while I can recognize the expertise and I can rely on that, I don't feel a whole lot of deference from a procedural standpoint because this is a de novo review. We are making this decision as a decision-making body. We are not reviewing the adequacy of the findings of the ASCC. I think in this case, that may be important because the ASCC said, and they found, that there would be minimal impact. There are other statements that said that impact has been minimized. And I would disagree with both of those findings. And therefore, in some ways, maybe it's fortunate that this is not a straight review. I think that it's also unfortunate that the parties haven't been able to figure out something closer to a solution. I'm interested that there is, was, an offer on the table to make a modification, at least to five feet. And I don't really have a sense as to how that would further minimize the impact. I'm interested in that. And I'm also interested in seeing some finality here. And to that end, I might be willing to see a continuance for until the next meeting to see whether or not a resolution can be possible and to knit these two neighbors and the neighborhood together to perhaps more fully minimize the impact and to, while not make the impact minimal, to lessen that impact itself. I think those are my general views. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I agree with a lot of what's said previously. First, I don't think I see a sequel issue here. I think if it's here, it's everywhere and it's similar to the prior speakers. In terms of, I would focus on the view question. But I want to make a more general point. I do have concerns on the process here. And I'm hearing different facts on what was available, when, what facts are accurate? And also whether certain submissions were in fact made available to the ASCC. Process is important. It's important to get right and make sure it's expedited so that, you know, we keep projects on a quick path. We're in COVID, we're in the pandemic. It's not the greatest time for all of that. So I think part of what we're seeing is complications due to we're doing things differently and people are not traveling as easily and they may not have quick enough communications. And, you know, literally, even if they wanted to get together, it would be a rather stilted conversation. But it is possible, and people are making these things happen. So I am quite concerned on the process and some of the facts not being crystal clear for what was available in terms of the ASCC, if the King's submission was in fact included or not. So these are both properties of stunning merit. The new property design for 138 is impressive, inspirational. It's a likable design. There's no, you know, the ASCC, I trust them to have thought about those design aspects. You know, I'm going to be deferential to a lot of their design guidelines, you know, and their interpretation of it. But I have a similar view as expressed by my colleagues that the ASCC, you know, it's not a minimal change in the impact on 148. It's considerable. And I also agree that we all live in the Portola Valley at the peril of having our view impacted. Everyone's got a bit of a story in the area about that. But it does sadden me greatly that there wasn't a better, easier path toward having people, you know, talk in the spirit of compromise as opposed to positioning, is the way I think about it. And, and so I do, you know, I think, I don't want to hold things up. I do think for me, there is room for a continuance if there is a need for more information that would make a difference. I don't want to presume that. I'm going to ask the commissioners to comment on that more quickly. I do think a very expeditious resolution, one way or the other. If there is merit for one more meeting, it should be one more meeting. And, you know, no matter what we decide in the next few minutes, I still think that, you know, people talking, you know, openly about their concerns and trying to reach compromise, you know, it's frankly a good idea in general. And it seems that it just was not, not happening here. I do want to also just comment that, you know, as to whether someone's living in the community or not, that really doesn't move my dial. I think that the, we've heard wonderful things from the neighbors. It sounds like a wonderful neighborhood. And it sounds like the Kangs have owned property in an area that they really love, and that's important. So I don't get swayed one way or the other by whether they're currently living in the community. Although, you know, it's good to have people have a long-term stake in order to, you know, get through processes like this. And, you know, appeals are there for a reason. And I want them to be rare. And I hope that after all of this is resolved, that we see them very infrequently. But they, you know, people have to feel like they had a chance to correct the record or make their statement. And I think, you know, I don't want to penalize people for doing that in good faith where they feel they have a basis for it. So it sounds to me, among the commissioners here, that we have two folks that are inclined to support the ASCC, deny the appeal. Nicholas, I'm not sure where exactly you're coming out, having heard my my own concerns about some discrepancy in what I perceive the facts to have been. I'll open it up for further discussion. I don't know if, having heard each other, there's any other view changes. Quick go around, a straw poll, maybe, Ann?
No, I agree with the points, though, that you all made that whether a person lives in the house right now is not part of my thinking either. I feel like the properties and houses, you know, lived for a long time and beyond the current owners. That's all.
John, any other comments?
John, you're on mute.
You're mute, John.
There we go, sorry. Pulling my thoughts together here. So, okay, I'm looking over here. And both Peter and Aruna are, we can't have any visual of them at the moment. Thanks, Peter. I, thanks, Aruna. So it's been a difficult time and for lots of reasons. You know, both personal and going on in society. Is, do you think there's any chance that you could talk further together, that you might actually come up with something? And I'm asking that only because, you know, if we want to close it, we could try to close it. But we are a community that tries to work together. So I don't know, where are you guys?
John, since January, it's been ten months. And I can't, you know, this stretching on and on and on and costs a lot of money. It's not just, oh, talk to each other. Well, we tried, we tried for many, many months with different processes. And it's just a penalty to me, you guys try and, you know, say, well, let's, you know, have another meeting and another meeting. So it would be an unfair, I feel, to me, by just dragging it on. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
That's what I was looking for. Peter, where are you?
I think from our end, we're in the same boat. We're spending an incredible amount of money for literally just owning the property. We, you know, we've, nothing had changed for years. And all of a sudden, there's this huge plan going up to take away one of the reasons why we bought the property. So we're in the same boat. I think since in the beginning, I mean, I don't know why we're getting blamed for this timeline again. There was an initial meeting in February. We didn't start hearing about real plans till like July. And then in August, we start trying to figure out how to make something happen. And it took us a while to catch up, look at the plans, get architects. And, you know, I think admittedly, we were working with some people that were a little slow. So unfortunately, that may have slowed down the process a little bit. But we were trying to push things forward. And, you know, we asked to meet with you, Aruna. I think it is always better to have principals talk to each other. And, you know, Dan is a great person. I mean, you hired a really great guy, he's very aggressive and really good at his job. But it put us on the defensive too. So now we're in a very kind of defensive mode. And, you know, I'm again extending the arm and say, hey, come over, take a look at it. I don't think you've even met my parents, yet all your neighbors are talking about how open and wonderful you are. I don't know why we've been excluded from the conversation.
Great. Okay, so I'm taking away from those two comments that both sides of the argument would prefer us to make a decision. That's it.
You know, we're happy to talk and come up with a solution. We're all on board about meeting and coming up with something for the negotiation.
Okay. Nicholas, any other comments from you?
Yeah, two points. One is the point that you and other members at the Commission made about being new to the community, what standing or how that would sway is an important point. And I can only concur with that. We welcome our new members of the community. And, of course, the decisions that are made are not made on the basis of popularity, although the applicant has clearly demonstrated standing and affection in the community. So I think that that's an important point. I think that the issues also process are important as well as making sure that the record is actually complete and has had been digested by the commissioners is useful. The only other thought that I have is, in some ways, it's a process issue. And that is, we have Westridge, which hasn't yet made itself clear. Itself clear. Yeah, just as a general matter, uh, I like to have the HOA actually have made a determination. Before it comes to us. It's not a good use of the ASCC's time or of our time. Uh, to make a decision that potentially is subsequently overturned. By the ASCC or if not overturned, that's the wrong, uh, that's the wrong phrase. But uh, uh, made null by a contractual relationship with the members of the HOA. I think that both having the Westridge, if they're able to weigh in. Within this period of time and if the parties are able to move closer to one another. Would be uh, would be useful.
Uh, Laura, can you?
Question on that, um, Judith. So, my understanding, and I'd appreciate it if that could be corrected if needed. Is that we, being the planning commission and the ASCC speak and the town council speak for the town. The HOA could choose to be more restrictive. Than us, but not less. Is that a correct understanding?
That is a correct understanding. Sorry, Carl, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct.
Is necessary for the Westridge HOA to sign off on this? Correct?
Well, ultimately, it would be necessary for them to sign off on it in order for them to fulfill their obligation to the HOA. But for the purposes of the town's process, we do not have to hold up our approval. And there has been at least one case where WASC has not opined in a timely fashion. And we have had to move forward on a project and we have approved it without WASC approval. So, we have been in that situation in the past.
Just as a a matter of history, if I if I may. Uh, uh, there have been meetings with WASC and the council. Uh, and previous planning directors and planning commission. Uh, to try to make sure that the process is uh more streamlined. So that we don't end up into the situation that we're in right now.
I agree, and I have met with them as well since I have been here. Um, my understanding though is that they have, are having some organizational issues right now that may prevent their timely review. I'm just not sure about that.
Okay, okay. All right, so even if we were to make a decision to approve based on the current. WASD. Like, the, it's not possible for the project to move forward without their approval. Or more restrictive guidelines applying, is that right?
I'm sorry, I I didn't. I'm sorry, I didn't follow the question.
Um, so, uh, even if tonight we cleared out the issue. And it seems to me, um, you know, if we if we did make a decision to approve. Uh, or to uh, confirm the ASCC decision. Then they still, the applicant still needs to deal with WASC before they can get started, or how does that work?
So, from a legal perspective. You could issue your permit and then um, they of cour- the up, the appellants of course can appeal. Um, we could take the appeal and then the next step in the process would be to issue a building permit. The town could issue that building permit. And then the applicant would have to decide if they haven't received WASC approval yet. They would have to decide whether to take that risk and build without the approval.
Okay, okay, I see, okay. All right, um. All right.
That's to say they're contractually prohibited from moving forward without WASC uh approval. So, it's not an issue where they would be moving forward at risk. They would be moving forward in contravention of the HOA's DCNRs. If I understand that correctly.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to understand that the process more. Um, you know, I guess uh, I'll uh question what it is if we were to continue. That we would want to know based on that discussion. Um, it sounds like the applicants are preferring a a decision based on John's inquiry. Although the Kangs are still open to further discussion. Um, so Nicholas, what what else would you wanna see if we did a continuance?
So, I think the three things that could be had. One, my understanding is Kangs are uh, uh, open to working over the next. Until our next uh planning commission meeting in a couple of weeks. Uh, towards a uh resolution. Two is, I'd like to have a stable uh record. Uh, I've got to say, uh, uh, that I don't like late hits. Uh, of uh memorandum coming in to the planning commission. I recognize that this may have been a reply, but I don't like late hits. It fouls the record or has the potential to. I don't like it, I can be clear. Uh, and uh, uh, finally, I think that there's an opportunity at least to get some clarity. From WASC, at least potentially as to where they are. And for them conceivably to actually either update their letter or to make a decision. Uh, before us. So, there I think are this. Uh, a couple of process issues.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and is, I'm not sure there's much we can do about the memos coming in too late. Um, other than if we did continue, chances are the record will be more stable. Because there's, there's another chance um for people to weigh in in a more leisurely fashion. The packet did come out a day later than normal, so that that had an impact, I think, on some of us. Um, all right, and so, you know, I think we've got. Two commissioners, if I hear correctly, willing to do a continuance for one more hearing. And I think that's Nicholas and myself, and I think Ann and John would make a decision now. Is that still correct? Okay.
If, let me put it this way. If we need a decision now, I'm ready to make a decision now. If we think something positive could happen. Within a couple of weeks before our next meeting, I'm okay waiting for that.
You know, um, can I just ask, why do people think something will change in the next two weeks? I feel like um, WASC has had a long time to issue a letter if they were organized and prepared to do that. And I do feel like the Kangs and the Gambiers have tried to work together since February. And nothing's worked out. I am not hopeful that something good's gonna happen in two weeks. Um, and I feel like it's just kicking the can down the road, two more weeks.
Which I, I kind of agree with that, but if we think something could happen.
Always something could happen, right? If you wait, I mean, if we wait seven more years.
Yeah, well, I don't want to wait four years, but.
The question is, um, what really is gonna happen in two weeks?
Yeah.
Um, I guess I'm uh, maybe I would like to see that letter. Dan said he could send me an email that they'd propose to do the five feet that WASC had suggested. But that that was rejected. I kind of feel like that was the time to do the last compromise. And if that didn't happen, I don't wanna keep, um, you know, it's about to get approved, it's about to get approved. Do you wanna make some changes? That's just not the way to run a project.
I, I don't know, this is welcome at this moment, but I could read the email to you. I can provide the date to it as well. I don't know if that's necessary, but it's on the table, I have it.
I'd be interested. I don't know, process wise, Kara, if we can, you know, if that's proper.
It was, I will say that Dylan was CC'd on this email as well. Um, so he has a record of it as well. It's from Tuesday, August eighteenth. And it's, I assume, been incorporated into uh staff's report and analysis of the project. As they were pretty involved in all the steps.
No, um, I actually, I I don't think you've closed the public hearing officially. Um, and so I think you you could certainly um entertain the the letter.
Okay, um. I don't know if you wanna pull it up?
Yep, I can, I mean, would you like to see the text? I can share it or I can just read it.
Share it.
You wanna see it too, okay?
Yes.
So, Dan, as you requested, I want, you can see the screen.
Yes.
I wanted to get back to you regarding your proposal after a discussion on August fourth. I apologize for the delay, but we've been working very hard to figure out alternative solutions as you have seen. Summarize, you proposed to reduce the height of the structure by twelve inches and shift the structure five to eight feet. We do believe your team put in work to come up with these modifications and for that, we are grateful. However, the fact remains that even with the changes, your revised plan would not remedy the main issue at hand. Namely, the blocking of our existing view corridor, which overlooks several prominent features. Um, shall I continue, it's quite long? It seems like. Okay. Furthermore, the WASC recommendation proposed the following in an effort to mitigate the view corridor issues. Shifting the proposed design structure as is, as far to the south as the combination of slope and soil conditions. Structural considerations would allow, to the extent possible, lowering the height of the second story element of structure. Given that the primary issue is not resolved, we believe that your efforts to reduce the height by twelve inches and shift the structure five to eight feet. Do not sufficiently address the WASC recommendation. First of all, we appreciate lowering the second floor to a more standard height. We noted that first floor ceiling heights are still in excess of customary residential proportions, indicating that this was still additional. There was still additional room to lower the structure as we discussed. Secondly, the shift of five to eight feet, all appreciated, would continue to block several prominent scenic features in our view corridor. So, we do not find this to be a sufficient remedy. I also wanna summarize our proposals made by our consultant Scott Stotler for the record. Shifting the second floor to another location on the lot. We proposed moving the second floor to another area of the site that has existing screening, which would mitigate the view corridor issue entirely. But admittedly, would significantly alter your design. Regarding the site, the, regarding the site, it says the site to lower the building pad by three to five feet. We proposed lowering the building pad to reduce visibility and increase the building pad area in the backyard space. However, you argued that regrading would create additional zoning challenges. Reduce the height of the structure by bringing the first floor and second floor heights to customary residential proportions. Ten to twelve feet on the first floor and nine feet on the second floor from the current fourteen and ten. We propose, we propose reducing heights on both floors. That would have the net effect of lowering overall height by up to five feet. That said, we are encouraged by the recent efforts of your discussion with Carter War on August seventeenth. We hope this conversation will result in a productive set of modifications. That will allow us to both come to an agreeable solution and move forward regardless of Peter Kang on behalf of the Kang family. And I will note that our current plans do reflect uh, second floor heights of nine feet. First floor heights of twelve foot seven, so seven inches over that.
Yeah, and, okay, all right, so.
So, can I, can I just make one comment? By the way, um, we were continuing to try to find a solution by coming up with different designs. And Dan effectively um was really trying to force a decision and wanted in writing that we were rejecting that proposal. We're trying to keep the door open, but um, you know, he wanted to, he wanted us to like put it down on paper. So, I was trying to outline what we proposed and, you know, just different ideas for a discussion. But, you know, they're all just being cut down. So, that's been our issue, this problem. We're trying to be workable and come up with the different ideas and see if we can come to some sort of agreement. Uh, but we keep it down and getting our hands forced to put things in paper and, you know, paint us as someone that we're trying to be obstructionist. Which is really not the spirit of the conversation.
All right, so you're, you're remaining open to a discussion. That wasn't a final walk away from your perspective.
We continue to be, the problem is the five feet that was offered really still blocks all the prominent features. So, it's not, what we're asking for is trying to preserve some of those features in the view. And so, five feet really doesn't have an effect. Lowering the height by one foot um really has no material effect, so.
Okay, yeah, we we have to bring it back.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna bring it back to the commission. I am gonna close the public hearing now, bring it back to the commission for a final uh poll uh here. So, does anyone want to make a motion here?
I would motion that we deny the appeal. And uphold the, please, August twenty fourth decision. To approve the project.
And I second that.
Okay. Uh, Nicholas, since we're not in the same room and we can't put our hands up, um, where are you?
Uh, I. I, the, are we voting, we now have a motion which been seconded. I believe we're now voting on it rather than have, or rather than having discussion on the. Uh, moved item is where I think that we are, unless you tell me otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna.
Or alternatively stated, I'm, I'm prepared to vote in favor of the seconded motion.
You are, okay. Um, all right, uh, in that case, um. Yeah, it it saddens me greatly, to be honest. Uh, but in the spirit of um trying to move the project along. And hearing people having difficulty with this. Um, I I would also go in that direction. So, let's do a formal motion and we'll do a all in favor type of thing. So, hate to do that to you, John, again, but we interrupted the motion process with a discussion.
So, I formally motion that we deny the appeal. And uphold the ASC's on the twenty fourth decision to approve the project. Subject to the recommended commit, conditions of the approval.
Do I need to resecond?
Yeah, it's just what, let's do it one more time.
I'm sorry, through the chair, um, we do have a resolution prepared. So, I think the motion should take the form of adopting the resolution, which upholds the ASCC decision. Okay, that, that would be staff's recommendation.
I'm sorry, what am I looking for here?
There is a resolution as attachment one, so the motion should take the form of um, motion. To the resolution, which upholds the ASCC decision.
So.
Page nineteen, red page.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I didn't print that one out. I make a motion to uphold the resolution. That approves the ASC decision. Is that sufficient?
Sounded good to me, I'll second.
Okay, uh, Laura, unless you tell us you need the full title read into the record, which I'm happy to do. Um, we'll go ahead and say all in favor.
Um, it, can we have a roll call vote for the resolution and for the record, please? Um, so, this will be in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution, which is attachment one to the staff report. Um, motion by John Goulden, second by Ann Koffsel. So, Commissioner Goulden.
Hi.
Commissioner Koffsel.
Hi.
Commissioner Tark.
Hi.
Chair Hasko.
Hi.
So, the motion passes four to zero.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. This has been tough and. I still encourage neighbors to talk, um, but but thank you.
And I would certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Our meeting's not ending though, right? We have, now, we we.
No, we, we have more. And we'll do it quickly. We have.
Commissioners, yeah, stay on if other members of the public want to drop off. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Could I have a short break?
That would be good.
It's understandable. Go ahead. Maybe five minutes, 10:40.
Yeah, five at the most. Yeah, that's good.
All right.
I mean, can vote on them.
What red page are those? I'm afraid I missed that there was those minutes.
Forty-six.
Probably slowed down my reading at page 430.
So you might recall, it's a long time ago, I recognize, around November and December, we held a couple of meetings and then a couple of people were absent. And then kind of the wrong people were present at the meeting to approve the minutes, and so you deferred the minutes to a future meeting, and we ended up doing that twice. It got out of order. So then unfortunately, I didn't pick up on that we had done that and not approved the minutes. And so we're just going back now and cleaning that up. And then the January 30th meeting was the meeting where we reviewed the Stanford scoping session for the EIR. And so that was an unusual meeting, and so I think this was just my mistake in terms of not bringing it forward to you for a later meeting. And then October 7th is just your last meeting, two weeks ago. So this is just making sure that we've got the records are cleaned up right now.
Okay. There is someone with their hand up on the attendees that I think we have the public session closed, so I don't think we're able to hear from, from the attendees. Is that correct, Laura?
If their comment is on the minutes, that I would recommend that you take that comment.
Okay, so let me turn the mic on for Rita.
Hi there. Yes, I'm still here. Thank you for, for taking my question, but I had sent Sharon and Laura a message earlier today, looking over the minutes, it does not show the names of the public that was at the meeting at the schoolhouse or the November or the January meeting or the participants for the last meeting that was two weeks ago, and if that's going to be added in.
Laura, it, those were in-person meetings, and I don't think we typically publish unless people spoke the public attendees. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that's been the practice in the past. Since we've transitioned to Zoom meetings, there has been some discussion about publishing the list of attendees. I don't know what the council is doing for their minutes for sure. So I, I'm afraid I can't speak to what council is doing. But there has been interest in including the list of attendees on the Zoom meeting. So if the planning commission would like to do that, then we certainly can.
Yes, and currently the town council is showing the names of the attendees on Zoom.
Aren't we, we're showing the, the attendees, right?
On screen. They want them in the minutes.
Ah, the minutes, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so it's not relevant to November and January. The only question would be for October 7th and onward. Do we want to do that? And I'm a little surprised to hear that that information is in the town council records. I don't know, do others have a view on it?
Do we even have the informa, I, I have no objection. Including that, I'm not sure we actually have the data from the previous meeting, so.
I believe that we do from Zoom. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that we do from Zoom. And as I understand, the intent is that if you have an in-person meeting, even if someone doesn't speak, you know that they've been present in the room. And so this is the equivalent of that, is that you, then you know who was present for the meeting, because the attendees don't have as much information as the panelists do about who's participating in the meeting. So that's how I understand the intent.
So I don't have any objection to that if we have the information.
Yeah, okay. Anne, Nicholas, what do you want to do?
I'm just trying to think, does it discourage participation or not? Yeah, I, I don't have an opinion.
Okay. Nicholas, do you have anything?
I've got nothing.
I, I don't, I find it weird that you would start that now when we don't do it in, in the in-person meetings. And I don't know if there would be a chilling effect or not, to be honest. I mean, personally, I wouldn't do it. I know the council has, and if we get comments that people value that, but I don't have enough information to make that decision now. I, I don't want to chill participation.
Hey Judith, if I may, I recognize this isn't in order. You and Laura are supposed to put together your guidelines on for meetings. Can you guys get together and figure it out, make a recommendation and drag it back to us?
Yeah. Laura, let's.
I don't want to.
I have no objection either way. If it's, if it's open and you can see it in their Zoom meeting, that's like, so, okay, why not?
Okay, Laura, why don't you and I take that on, and then let's go to the approving the minutes. It's getting quite late. So any comments on the November 20th, 2019 minutes? Corrections, comments?
Well, I have no comments on any of the minutes.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on any of the minutes?
That's a good question. I'm pretty sure I did not. Just a sec. No, I do not have comments on either sets of minutes.
Yeah.
You know, but could I, oh.
I only had one, but Nicholas, do you have anything?
No, I don't. I'm fine.
Okay. On pa, red page 459 at the very end, it, it just sounds funny. I'm sure I said something along these lines, but it, it quotes me as saying the town does not want to lose their equestrians. And I think it probably should have, should be changed to something like the, the town needs to consider making equestrian use of, I think it's an area, you know, safe or something like that. It sounds like I'm envisioning the equestrians being, you know, literally lost. You could keep that going. And then, okay, so if there's no other comments, Anne, did you have one?
No, I, maybe this goes after this, but I really, really think that when we have minutes to approve, we approve them at the next meeting. I think on this one, we did not do it because the people present, you know, some of the people that were at the meeting that had the minutes weren't at the next meeting. But in my opinion, if one of us is going to be absent, it's our responsibility to read those minutes and tell our colleagues or tell Laura like, oh, here's my corrections, and then we go to the next meeting. I mean, it is ridiculous asking me to read something like, is this what you said back then? I mean, I know this one just had a glitch, but even when we delayed it, you know, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, I'm like, wow, we're just talking about such old minutes.
Yeah.
Is that legitimate? We can improve minutes offline, Laura, from a process perspective?
Or provide comments offline?
Yeah.
The, the minutes need to be approved in the meeting. Kara, do you have an opinion about providing comments for, from offline for meetings, for meeting minutes?
So for instance, I was at a meeting. The minutes are set to approval at the next meeting, but I'm not going to be there, but you've sent them out. So could I proactively send in my approval ahead of the meeting?
Not your approval, but your comments, like, oh, I didn't say this, I said it this way. Then the, you wouldn't get to approve or not, but the rest of us would get to see your suggestion and say, yeah.
Okay.
I also just wanted to say that it's, it's not necessary for you to participate, to be at the particular meeting where you approve the minutes. So you can vote on a set of minutes and not be present at the meeting.
Okay.
That is widely not known at the committee I've been in. People like, oh, well, I wasn't there. I have to abstain.
Right.
Well, and I think, I think the practice has been to abstain. I mean, I think that that's where people have a comfort level, I think, in my experience, but I think there is a lot of value in making sure that we approve them in a timely fashion. And it's, I mean, this is also partially staff's responsibility, so I'm, I'm sorry that these go away. It's a mistake.
I know this is a glitch, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. If there's no comments, why don't we have a motion to approve the minutes of November 20th, 2019, January 30th, 2020, and October 7th, 2020, as amended?
I would motion to approve the minutes, three different minutes, November 20th, 2019, January 30th, 2020, and October 7th, 2020, as amended in the comments.
I second.
Do you want to do a roll, a roll call for this?
Oh, I don't think we have to, just all.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. And is there a staff report or anything that anyone has to share with the commission? Okay. It's late. I think we should all move along, so.
Wait, wait, I want to go and compliment the fire marshal who's taken on a new position reasonably recently, and who has done a marvelous job in helping to keep us safe and secure during this fire season, which we're now still in, and looking towards fire season's future. I've had the pleasure of working with him, as well as still being in contact with Fire Marshal Denise, or former Fire Marshal Denise, who's now taken a new role with the county or nonprofit associated with the county, so she's still within the community. But what a, what a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
Could you explain it a little bit further? I mean, I'm glad they're great people, but what are you complimenting them for?
So they've done a number of things. So one of the things that they've done is they will go and review your fire situation at your house, at your property, make recommendations. They've just finished a fire. Their, their shipping activities up in our neck of the woods, which is pretty remote and has a lot of scrub. People took the shipping opportunity seriously. Large piles of debris and trees which had been thinned out are now reduced to mulch, which keeps us safer. The kind of planning and advisement during the recent fires that were a few miles away from from us, just over the ridge required a lot of coordination on, on their part in recommending resources to interested parties and to advising the council and the ad hoc fire committee, or fire prevention committee, I should say. Has been really impressive, and I've noted that Fire Marshal Don has been on the job for, what? Half the year, maybe a little more since Fire Marshal Denise left or retired. And both those were big shoes to fill, and what a time to have to fill them. So I want to compliment their, Denise's continued work and Don's initiative, both in making recommendations to our little neck of the woods, and also what he and Denise have done for our community more broadly.
Awesome.
That's what I've got.
Thank you.
That's great. And appropriate.
Yeah. Laura, could I ask, do you have visibility to what the likelihood of planning commission meetings are over the next few months?
I'm not sure that I've, I'm checking in on the dates. I, I checked in with all of you and I checked in with ASEC. I'm working with planners on a couple of different things to see what's going to be ready to come forward, but I'm really not sure yet.
All right, Laura, I, I think unless there's anything else, we should, I guess, make a motion to adjourn, if we want to follow that formality now. We're going to have Craig.
Greg makes the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, he likes that, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Stand in those shoes.
Yeah, I will motion to adjourn on behalf of Craig. We give a second, come on.
All right, all in favor? There's none opposed.
Before 11 o'clock, I'm happy about that.
Well, thank you all, and thanks to the staff for, and the town attorney, if she's still on, for all the preparation. I think this is a tough, a tough meeting, and we, we thank you for your efforts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I know these are the hard ones, so we appreciate it.
Yes. Yeah, I hope they're rare.